Are you ready, Don?
Yep.
Okay, I'll make him the order. Don, tell me what you want to say.
Yes.
Look at the minutes, I guess. We'll have to wait on the 31st minutes. Because luckily, whoever here's going to be able to vote on it, so we'll have to vote. Unless you're going to let me second my own motion.
Do you want to read the minutes?
Oh, you can't appear on there.
January 29th, 2018, the regular meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners was held in the basement meeting room of the courthouse Monday, January 29th, 2018. Chairman Terry Finch called the meeting to order at 10:00 a.m. with Vice Chairman Alexis Flue, member Aljo Wallace present. Town Clerk Don Holler at Parlow was in attendance. Others present for portion of the meeting, there's a list. Alexis moved to approve the minutes of January 22nd. Regular meeting is corrected, seconded by Aljo Wallace, motion carried. Katie Line requested that the board consider options regarding bridges surrounding their property as they have been locked into their property at times, requesting permanent repairs to a bridge near the residence, and inquired if a low-water crossing would be a solution to the bridge that was closed several years ago. The board related that they will discuss Line's request with Highway Department officials. Eric Johnson Campbell and Johnson Engineers provided change order number two for the board's approval and explained each of the electrical changes identified which results in reduction to the contract. Alexis moved to approve change order number two in the amount of $34,695, seconded by Aljo. Motion carried. Jeremy Rosebrook inquired about the gravel pile remaining in his pit after lease expired and related that due to the expiration of the lease agreement, he believes that the pile gravel is now his property and issued concern regarding statements made to the Ottawa County Highway Department by Lincoln County Highway Department Supervisor during a time when he was attempting to negotiate the sale of the gravel. County Attorney Jennifer O'Hare inquired whether the board was satisfied with the proposed changes to the mediation agreement by Steve Schneider and his attorney, Robert Krangle. Each board member identified their ideas and concerns regarding the proposed changes to the mediation. No changes to the mediation were approved. Emergency Manager David Doe inquired about approval to attend the following training in Pueblo, Colorado, Leadership and Management of Surface Transportation Incidents with all costs paid for by grant funding which had been tabled from the January 2nd, 2018 meeting. Aljo Wallace moved to allow the chairman to sign the application, seconded by Terry Finch, motion carried. Doe provided forecast information and requested that the board continue with current burn ban. Board approved. Jim Webke inquired about the bid received to dry piling and whether another bridge could be added to satisfy the minimum amount. Aljo moved to adopt Resolution 2018-7 to clear uncollectible accounts receivable and insurance write-offs in the amount $3,238.96 from the Lincoln County Health Department accounts receivable records, seconded by Alexis, motion carried. Human Resource Officer Deborah Zacco discussed changes to the job descriptions provided for the ambulance service. The board reviewed the Web Fund Committee's recommendations for 2018 funding. Aljo Wallace moved to approve the Web Fund Committee's recommendations in the total amount of $22,078.8 as presented and approved the following Windpower Economic Benefit Fund distributions. Leadership Lincoln County, City of Lincoln, $3,000 for pool improvements. Lincoln County EMS, $2,178.8 for exercise equipment. Lincoln County Health Department, $1,000 to offer a becoming a mom education class. Lincoln County Economic Development Foundation, $5,000 to assist with the exterior improvement grant program for downtown businesses. Lincoln Recreation Department, $900 for wayfinding signs for a disc golf course. Lincoln County Historical Society, $4,000 for repairs to the Marshall Yoey House garage. And Rural Opportunities Zone, $6,000 continuing support for the previously approved dispersments for tuition reimbursement, seconded by Terry Finch, motion carried. Aljo Wallace moved to follow the recommendations of the Council on Aging extending the terms of Judy Olvers, Keith Yornell, and Charlene Watson expiring December 31st, 2019, and Charlene DeWitt expiring 31st, 2018, December 31st, 2018, seconded by Terry Finch, motion carried. Alexis discussed bridge repair priorities and commissioner education. She moved to set the end-of-the-month meeting to an evening time encouraging public attendance. Motion died for lack of second. She moved to have the commission educated on the utilization practices of Mobile 311 program used for Highway Department projects. Motion died for lack of second. Aljo Wallace moved to adjourn. Motion died for lack of second. Alexis moved to seek an Attorney General opinion on KSA 75-4301A and KSA 75-4304 regarding the contract negotiated by Lincoln County Attorney on behalf of O'Hare Law LLC. Motion died for lack of second. With no further business to come before the board, the chairman adjourned the meeting at 12:11 p.m. until 10:00 a.m., Wednesday, January 31st, 2018, in the commission meeting room of the courthouse. Don, you may just want to add an S under human resources, changes to the job descriptions provided, but that's not really a change to the minutes, just a little grammatical thing I caught.
If there are any further changes, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I will second. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have two cereal malt beverage applications for knot heads at the lake, one for consumption on premise and one for carry out.
I move to approve cereal malt beverage licenses 2018-1 and 2. 2018-1 and 2018-2.
I will second the motion. Is there any discussion?
I have some discussion. Can I speak? Sean Astrow, Slink County. There's some septic issues for that property that I'd like to see addressed. I mean, I don't know if I heard of, you know, all of their deal, but it'd be nice if we could get some cooperation from them on addressing some of those issues. They have a lagoon that serves the place, it's got large trees, ended up trying for years to get them to cut those down. And erode cabins that the septic work on it is quite shady. Needs to be addressed.
The new cabins?
No.
Old cabins?
The old cabins, they're going up the hill. You're talking knucklehead or knot head?
Knot head. I think we can address those separately from cereal malt beverage. I don't have a problem addressing them.
Agreed.
No further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Sean, I guess you're up.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Hello.
I'm gonna sit right up here, sorry. What I brought with me is a map of the field activities to give you to give you a general idea of the coverage and some of the activities that we do. We've done these in the past. But we mainly just negotiated or talked about permits that were going on. And sometimes I think the permits didn't give you the full idea of the activities that we do in the county, nor does it kind of show the coverage that we have across the county. So just to talk about the map just a little bit. This was through the assistance of a GIS program. I had asked earlier in the year if we could utilize the parcel maps through the appraiser's office and they graciously let us do that. And I'll show you here in a minute why we like to do that. And then talk to you about where we're going in the future. But anyways, in this map, it'll have where we've done lagoon inspections, also talked about water testing, soil profiles, new constructions, and then some school inspections, and then anything out of the ordinary that we did in the county, just to make you guys aware of what all I'm doing. And the other printout I brought, talked about the year-end wastewater statistics. We did 12 new systems here in Lincoln County. Nine of them are for new homes, which I thought is quite unusual. Usually we'll have three or four new homes. It's nice to see that we're getting some new home construction in the county. And three of them are for existing replacement systems. Of those 12, all of them were done with rock and pipe years ago. A lot of them were done with chambers, we've kind of seen a trend from two chambers and then back out to back to a more consistent, kind of a more traditional lateral field, which is rock and pipe. We don't seem to have the issues here in Lincoln County that we've had in Slink County with the chambers. It's an open void style of those filling in. So, but the contractors are paying attention to that. So that's the first page. The second page will talk about our well activities. And we didn't get a whole lot of requests for water sampling. As I've mentioned before, when we went from being joint funded to county funded in Slink County, we doubled our fees. I think we kind of priced ourselves right out of that market because you can sure tell that we're not doing as many water samples. And that, because we're not doing as many, it also affects how many hours we're spending in the county. But these are some of the results from it. We had seven requests, 29 separate water tests. Three were positive for coliform bacteria. Coliform bacteria is naturally occurring, pretty common. It happens mainly when the wells sit stagnant or there's issues with the well casing in itself, whether it's cracked casing or hand dug well, or something of that nature. I won't go through all those stats, but the one that seems a little bit alarming was the 50% of the wells that we tested were above the standard drinking water level for chloride. And that is really accustomed to Lincoln County, the salt flats and just our geological area of what we're at. So you'll see a lot of that. And then 71% were high in nitrate. So both those tell me that we really need to do something about trying to lower those costs down to where we can get back and make people aware of that hazard to them in their regular drinking water. As you know, wells are the homeowner's responsibility. They have to address that. And a lot of people, if it doesn't smell funny or doesn't taste funny, you know, they just keep on drinking it, so. We had two new wells and the permitted, and then we have one that started in the process. This page that you were just looking at is our historical to kind of give you guys an idea of what we've been doing in the counties in general. And so we did 12 septic systems, two wells. We didn't do any legumes or any alternative systems. And like I said, we're down to seven water samples. Which, you know, we typically have been averaging-
You have one on page two of screening, is that what that means?
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Oh, I'll correct that for the next one.
That's all right. You're saying these are the... So like in 2017, you inspected or?
We permitted 12 septic systems.
Permitted.
Yes. These are all permitted systems.
So that doesn't necessarily mean they're new?
No, they all are new.
Those are all new?
Well, yeah, I see what you're saying. It may not be a new house, but the system has been replaced.
So nine of them were new homes. Three of them were an existing home that basically put in a new septic system. We tried to do that to give you trends of whether the county's grown or not. So that's a good trend on Lincoln County's side.
So the nine are new, but the three may be changing from one particular type to another, or building-
Most of it, you know, a septic system, the septic tank is designed to last 20, the lateral field's 30. And a lot of these homes have the original septic system in them. So at some point, they just fail. And so we've done some repair work on them on as far as upgrading them up to current standards. And all those standards have changed over time. You know, the separation distance used to be 25 feet from a well, and now it's 50, and so on and so on. All those things have really changed over time. And then this gives a breakdown of the tests that we did. So we did the two bacterias, chloride, we had some iron requests, which were both high, and then manganese, and then one total hardness. Each of the minor tests, there's a standard basic, which is your coli, E. coli bacterias, nitrates and chlorides, that's a typical standard test. And then if we notice anything out of the ordinary from staining or odor, then we would test something else, so.
Sean, when you, the numbers are down on the water test, is it because people are calling and you're telling them the price and then they don't want to do it or?
We're just really, we're just not getting those requests. You know, we've, to be honest, it could be us too, you know, we've been relocated twice. We have different phone numbers, we have different cell numbers. You know, maybe we need to get more involved in-
Maybe we could do an ad in the paper with the numbers and stuff possible.
Yeah, and May is a water testing awareness month. We can usually promote that and see if we can get some more people involved in that. And what we've done in the past on that is offer some free water testing to just try to encourage people. Yes, we give away that service for that year, but maybe it encourages them to test again the following year after that. So we'll have to work on that because I'd like to see our numbers in the 20s. The effects are tiny in the county. All right, the next few pages are the first quarterlies. I'm not gonna go into great detail on that. But the nuts and bolts of it is each activity is listed there, the number of inspections and hours spent. And this is, this is really field activity. So don't think that, you know, I put down three hours per visit, that that's all that it pertains to. There is more time in it. But these were, these are tabulated as field activities in your county. Now, there's miscellaneous work, paperwork, lab work, some of that stuff that goes on in-house that we put down as work activities, but we don't charge that to the county. So in general, you guys can look those over. The last one is what I want to talk with you, and that's a summary of the four quarters. And so this will have the general total. So we did, now I'll kind of go through this here. We have four pumper trucks, we have DJ Environmental, which has changed to ready industry. And we have Adrian Service. And I guess that would be it. So they have trucks that we inspect yearly, make sure they don't leak. They're labeled, they're in good standing and they have a name, they're basically roadworthy. And we do those inspections, that's part of the EPA 503, which is Septage Hauling License that gets kicked down to the local level. So we do those inspections. On the sewage inspections, we had 31, we had four consults in roughly 111 hours addressing those septic issues. On water, we had eight inspections, four consults, and 52 hours. We did have one complaint, which was to deal with a well up on Union Road, which I would like to report has been fixed. And that's all just enough.
So, out of curiosity, if I may interrupt for one minute? You have inspections as a line and then consultations as a line item.
Right.
Are the inspections on some sort of rotation? Are they by request?
They're by, they're by request. So a consult would be like if somebody asked us to come out, we have this water issue, we have this septic issue.
For their own property?
Right.
An inspection is a request by someone else where you go out and look because someone has reported something?
No, a complaint is only a report, so we'd only do like a complaint. A consult is really like, to be real blunt with you, is if somebody has a failed septic system and they're doing a cost share application, which is a method in which it helps pay for the septic system.
With the state?
Yes. That's through the NRCS office. There's a cost share program, it's a non-point source denomination program.
What's it, NR?
NRCS, National Resource Coalition.
So does that come from federal funds or?
It's a, yeah, three, I think it's EPA 3, don't quote me on this, 319.
I'm just wondering if someone wanted to know that that's an option?
Yes. If they have a failing or an illegal septic system, there's a cost share money, a set amount for each county, and-
Available per year?
Yes.
So have we maxed out on using the funds?
Yes, yes. And so that's one thing that I try to do because it's kind of a use it or lose it mentality. If you don't use it, you just get done, unless the following year. And Patty Winters with, she's the Soil Conservation District, she- So I go out and verify that it's actually failing, illegal, and do some documentation, write a cost share letter for that family. And that goes through Patty, the board approves it, goes to the state office for approval. If they meet all those requirements, then the state will say yes, go ahead and fix it. And then it chips in, like in Lincoln County, it's $2,500 towards the cost of replacing the septic system.
As a maximum per applicant?
Yes.
For a total of, do you know, per year?
I believe there's four or five.
Four or five available?
Right. Now, it's not all septic, some of them go into wells and some of them go into well pluggings. So it's at their discretion of how, of course, I typically will do well pluggings or septic systems.
So.
First come, first served.
It is. And you can sign up in March of each year, and then the money is not available till July 1st. And then they'll sign you up with a, say like a 120-day contract. And so if you apply for it, you have 120 days to complete the install. Or you have to either give it back or renew the contract. Some people will sign up and then, you know, not follow through.
Get everything done.
Right, so.
Going to be retroactive? If you put it in, can you apply for?
Well, the way it is, it's spend it or lose it. And so we want to know if people aren't going to use it because we'll shift that money to somebody else.
He's saying if you've already paid for it yourself, can you get a reimbursement?
No, no, I'm sorry.
It has to be in the order of the trade.
No, you have to have it approved prior to doing any work. So yeah, that does bite a few people, so. And it has to be, it can't just be it's too small, it really needs to be illegal or failing. Some people will call us and say, well, it's 1,000 gun tanks and 100-foot lateral as well. It's not technically failing, it's just too small, so. The water tests down below are the seven and 10 and a half hours of spent time on that. Turn to the next page. We did school inspections this year with Ladonna, and I'll have to admit, that was kind of growing pains. It's the first time we've done it, there's been a big push on the state level. It's always been in the state statutes, people's just ignored that you're supposed to be doing these school inspections. Well, they're having a hard time with us just keeping ignoring it. So Ladonna and I went through the two Lincoln schools and then the one still in the school. And I think we raised the tension of some of the things that need to be addressed. Now, whether they have the funds to address all those problems, I doubt it. But at least it prioritizes for them of things. It's good third party, you know, I don't have any skin in either one of them. So it's nice for me to say, okay, your roof's leaking, that needs to be priority one. Or you need to move these chemicals out of this area because, or get a fire cabinet. Some of those things that I think they probably knew about, it was just lacking the funds to do it. So now that they know that that's a need and it's prioritized, then they can do some grant writing to try to, you know, get enough money to address some of those issues. And we'll be doing that annually, so they'll get used to me coming around. And then the last one, last page is our meetings, which are usually LEPC meetings or commissioner meetings. And so we ended up spending 208 and a half hours of field activities. And then we'll have some activities, you know, in office and then training. The way we currently do it, we run up all our training in Slink County. So that cost doesn't come back on you guys, so that helps. Sorry, that was kind of long-winded, but there's a lot to talk about.
Can we go to the map for just a minute?
Sure.
All of the marked places here on the map, those are all permits that you did?
Permits or activities I did. So like septic around, or actually septic systems that are installed. Okay, and should have their name by them. And then the others-
But I'm saying, are these, like you said? Okay, we did, or you did 12 septic systems, so are there 12 locations on here? I didn't count, but is that what the, okay.
Yes. Unless we made a mistake. They should all be labeled.
I'm just wondering, so what's RET stand for?
Real Estate Transaction.
And CS?
They have to do an inspection when real estate-
When, cost share letter. I'm sorry, I should write this all down.
No, I'm just learning.
Okay. Cost share letter is the, and then the consults or anything that we do otherwise. Like you'll see one for Dan Winneke down in the corner where he consulted about his existing well. And I didn't think it was worth rehabbing, so he just drilled a new well. And we water tested there. Now, the one thing about these maps that are a little misleading is there's two water tests with Dan Winneke and then the consult kind of covers up the water test.
Oh, I see the triangle there, or the bottom of the, yeah.
So there was two water tests for Dan and then, because they're so closely in that area, you know, we try to pinpoint right on this. And then I'll kind of explain that to you if you guys haven't been, and I know this is going to be awkward for you guys to see. But with our mapping, what we're trying to do is we pulled in our parcel information. And so, let's just go. And we have these tools through the GIS program where we can pull out aerial photographs. So much of our time is spent out in the field, that it's best for us to have as much tools as we can available to us in the field while we're doing activities. So we all have desktops, we all have wireless remotes we can pull on our sites. But the mapping makes it easier because, let me kind of explain this in the past. I'm gonna tell you negative before I get to the positive. When you do a livestock well out in the county, typically, when you do it at a residence, you can use the address for the residence, okay? When you do it out in the county, you have to make up an address, okay? What we're finding with working with the GIS is that's the last thing you want to do. And so what we're going to start doing is tying that, the well to that parcel. So each property has its own unique parcel ID. And so with you guys allowing us to do this, I can click on the parcel and pull up the information. And then we can assign an address, now this one just happens to have a house. But usually it can help us, and then it gives us information that leads us to, you know, like, some of the counties, just to tell you how corporate our job is. The post office- some of the counties, just to tell you how corporate our job is, um, the post office, the routing of what, where is Beverly, where is Lincoln? That's clouded. And when you get the directory, the, the county directory might be right and it might not. And so, uh, we've added all these layers, if I could zoom out. And, and a lot of this is creature comfort for us. And so, you can see these, um, maps. Let me go back out of.
Basically, so that you know which landowner to find and contact?
Yes.
Because a parcel that they own may not be adjacent to their residence.
And so, like this, let me close this a minute. So, this is a, you see how this says it's Lincoln address right in the middle of Beverly and then another one? And, and so, when we mail out a letter, if we mail it out to the directory, it comes right back to us as the wrong address. And so, when somebody has a well that's down, and I'm trying to send them a well permit, and, uh, the well driller won't sign them up on the permit to drill until they have that permit. The last thing we need is to play
Mail tag.
Music tag with some of this stuff. And so, um, we've put layers on this. And this is for all our counties that we serve. And then we can also go in and address some of our, uh, floodplain. Now, Lincoln County doesn't have a floodplain, but the other counties do. And that drastically affects the, the septic system in the other counties, because the laterals could be in the floodplain, the tank cannot. And, um, if you're gonna build in a floodplain, you have to go through the right process through FEMA to elevate the soil high enough. And there's all, I mean, it can be done. It just takes a lot of work to do it. But it's nice that you can address that with them right off the bat. And so, uh, the parcel information is helpful. We also do real water districts. And so, as much information as we have out in the county, um, so this is Ellsworth. And, and some of those real water districts are totally crazy too, um, here Celine County where they have a separate rural district from actually where the boundaries. Um, so, these are, um, things that I've been working on and then, uh, maps. And at some point, what we'll do is we'll end up with, um, when we enter these work or workload, uh, we have this information that tells us exactly what we're doing. And the idea is when, um, we have all this data, really, since we started doing our sanitary code, but some of it, if, if you weren't the one doing it, you'd have a hard time following up on it behind, behind me. Okay? So, the idea is let's get the most precise. So, I could GPS that spot. And so, if you guys replace me tomorrow with somebody else, that person can step in behind me and make some sense of what's going on. You know, what has this kid been doing for twenty years? And so, you can come in and say, okay, um, you know, there was a soil profile here done, or a well started and it was a dry hole. Um, but any amount of information is, uh, is so beneficial to us out on the, on the job site. It's, it reduces the amount of phone calls that you have to do later. Um, and then we have all our links to us, our web's soil survey. Uh, we also, um, to our GPS, which is the Kansas Geological, um, Well Survey, and that pulls up that information. And, um, we have all this information held to us. And we're, we're constantly working at trying to make ourselves a little bit better. So, that's, that's the process.
It's very helpful though. I mean, it's a good visual. It shows, I mean, it's a good learning tool for someone even who doesn't have a clue.
Well, the idea is, is to make it more available for people. Um, so if they walked in our office and said, you know, what are you guys doing?
I love this work. Right.
Yeah. And so, you could pull it up and say, oh, okay, yeah, I understand that. Um, and on one little personal note, I'm a hell of a time I am. Um, I did wanna mention, um, last fall, I got, just on a personal note, I got nominated to be, um, the president of the Kansas Environmental Health Association. And they did vote me into that. So...
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's a nice little honor. Um, and it's Kansas Environmental Health Association is a group of sanitarians. So, it's nice to be recognized by your peers that you put forth, uh, a good effort and, um, are trying to streamline things to make it a little better. So...
Maps very helpful, Sean.
Right.
I, I pretty much know when you tell me where you're working at. I know the county enough, but what for like this. And it's, it's beneficial to me too, don't get me wrong.
Right. And, uh, sometimes, you know, if you, if you run into Christie Chini, say thank you for listening to our county, you know? Or, uh, or some of the other people that, you know, uh, maybe come to you with, with, uh, problems. So...
So, what do you want addressed with this cabin situation?
Um, that, that's Hell Creek cabins. I don't have any issues with them. They have five septic systems.
Okay, I thought maybe it was black for a different reason.
But it's, uh, Nodheads. Um, he has a lagoon that his business, his house runs into. And then also these line of cabins he has going up the hill that he rents out. And, um, I've tried to address, is he still alive? Is, is he a daughter?
I think he's...
Okay. So, I, I'll, I didn't make any headway with the dad. He, he was an old wastewater plant guy and, and he knew best and, and without some support, I wasn't gonna get anywhere. Um, and so, I'll visit with the daughter, you know, um, and see if I can talk her into. But a lot of those things, you know, the sewer was running on top of the ground. And they were using kind of duct tape and, and electric tape and this, this wasn't really properly done. Um, now, if you're doing them in the summer, it's not gonna freeze up. But, um, it's something that ought to be buried properly and run. And then the trees just need to be cut out of the lagoon and then, uh, the fence put back up.
How does that fall as far as responsibility on the county?
Okay. I will go talk to him and give him the timeframe in which to address it, which is usually forty-five or sixty days. Um, and then see if there's any, if, I don't feel like there are any input or, and then so at the end of the forty-five days, I'll go out and see if there's any progress made. If there's not any progress made, then I'm gonna have to come back to you guys and say, we have a violation that needs to be, uh, kicked up to the next level. Which you guys either agree to that and then send it on to, um, county attorney. You guys don't have county council here in the county, but, um, and then she'll send them a letter. So, usually the process between, um, the first addressing and then the second, that's where we go.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Sorry, it's a little long-winded there.
Thank you, Dawn.
Yeah. And if you look over that stuff and have questions, let me know. So... All right.
David?
Yep. Better take that.
This is just coming before the, the chairs, or the, excuse me, the board reference, LEPC appointments, um, yearly. These are updated. Uh, again, yearly also, I know your, your board, um, reappoints the chair. The chair is normally appointed to the LEPC. So, I'm asking that an appointment be made for, Terry, you're currently the chair for the Lincoln Commission. Um, that you be appointed as a representative to the LEPC. And then also, the other one highlighted down at the bottom is a community group. Uh, Scott Kearns is currently as a St. Paul's Lutheran church pastor. He's getting ready to be deployed, and I say deployed, appointed as a full-time pastor for the Air Force. And he will be, his, his lead base, ASOC, will be up in Great Falls or near Great Falls, Montana. So, to replace him with Scott Kearns, or I'm sorry, with John Paul Ellis as a representative of the Lincoln County CERT team. So, I'm just asking that you appoint those two individuals as members in those capacities?
I move to appoint Terry Finch, Lincoln County Board of County Commissioners Chairman, and John Paul Ellis, representing CERT.
Correct. Uh-huh.
To the Commission on Emergency Planning and Response.
I will second the motion.
Did you get that, Dawn? Okay.
Very further discussion. If not, all those bearers say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then the third piece of documents in your, in your bundle is just weather forecast from the Weather Service for the week. Um, they're saying five to possibility three to five inches tonight through tomorrow. And then again, precipitation, um, towards the end of the week, Friday and Saturday. And again, just pertaining to burn damage currently in place.
Moisture.
What's that?
Moisture.
What's that?
Moisture.
Made about three to five inches of rain.
Yes, yes.
Uh, I think till we see the snow, you wanna wait, leave the burn down on.
Well, it says the chance of precipitation is eighty percent on Tuesday. Does that mean tomorrow?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
We can do a phone meeting if you'd be available. Come on. Let's, let's, let's go that route.
Okay.
We'll leave it on for the day.
Okay.
See what we get. If I got a little bit, there's not enough, I don't think, to
Right.
Grasp I was, I was talking.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If, if we get that three to five, we'll, we'll address it by phone or whatever.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, Kelly. Oh, Kelly's in the hallway.
Do you want your gift first?
Are you?
Yeah.
Sure.
I'm here because of her, but it was very simultaneous for this to be given to me.
I couldn't get there last week. Kelly was going to another function.
Which we're supporting of that in many respects.
I couldn't make that name work.
As far as from this, though, double check that. Make sure it's accurate.
That's correct.
Okay. But that's just a little information. Uh, North Central Region Planning, you've heard of this. You've been up there. Alexis has told you things. Dawn knows a lot about us. Kelly can also. In fact, I encouraged her to come February twenty-second. Not in place of you, just maybe it's a little bit more extra. On the twenty-second, Tim Rogers, the Islamic Airport Authority Executive Director, will be there talking some about the changes down there with the airline. But also working together with others in the region on fabrication lab endeavors, as well as making use of the hangars kinds of things and unmanned aircraft kind of initiatives. Just a little bit broader review approach. And he wants to dialogue some. We are involved as an organization. These counties need to be involved in some too. So, that'll be part of that discussion. There'll be other things too. Actually, one kind of exciting thing with the Economic Development Group, I hope Small Business Development Center shoring up will happen. Or at least it'll be realized that week because of the meeting we're hosting on the twentieth. So, we'll have some of those things to go over. But another item particularly related to Lincoln County is the board coming here at the April meeting. Uh, the April twenty-something or other, last Thursday of that month, coming through April. We talked lightly about it, but if you're okay, I'll work with the Dons and the Kellys about that. Just get all that, kind of, probably try to meet at the bench. They have great wireless internet, I understand. But...
That'd be fun.
And then eat lunch and go from there. Maybe I'll check this out, check that out, kind of thing. So... Take one.
Sounds good.
New at the school, the old school.
Hey, we can do that too.
What would you do if you were given this? Anyway, those are just some ideas, but...
I don't know what they've been here before, what they've looked at, toured, or it's been a long, long...
In part, that's what the board member said. I don't think we've been there since the theater was new. So, that's, and that would be Kermit Rush and David Thurlo. The rest of the board maybe has never been, other than driving through, never stopped and done anything. Lincoln, so...
That'll be nice.
But if there's other suggestions, thoughts for, what was a couple, probably start noon-ish, but maybe end up two-thirty or three.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I think we have someone waiting on a phone conference call at ten forty-five.
Yeah, I haven't called her yet, but I told her.
Yes.
Be ready.
Yeah. So, are we ready?
Okay.
Yeah.
And so that you know, this county courthouse has had two heritage trust funds in the past, but their, Dawn was just fresh out of school. Junior high, I think, because Doris was starting a trainer upstairs. That was a few years ago.
It's like, it's been a while.
Late nineties.
Was the last one of the water proofing.
I'm gonna put you on speaker.
It was related to drainage.
Yeah.
Uh, pipes going away.
Uh-oh.
The other one was working on the back steps.
Hold on, I'll see here.
Something pointing around that step area, north side.
Can you hear us? Uh-oh.
That's better.
Let's see, if I put it, if I put it here, can you?
Are you able to hear us?
Am I cutting out?
I can hear like every other word. I don't know.
Uh-oh.
You can bring your chair up here.
Do you want me to try my phone?
Yeah, that has a cluster of the rubber around it.
All right, let me call you back in a second, okay?
Okay.
I don't know that you've ever had, uh, preservation tax credits here though. It was talked about in a previous administration for a clock, but it was not pursued. Clay County and Mitchell County, Houston. And those are nice. You get a quarter for every seventy-five cents you put in, kind of thing. And don't have to do a whole lot of effort with flying.
Hi, can you hear me?
I think it's a little bit worse. Oh, no.
It's a little worse?
Yeah. Do you want me to try to call you?
Sure. You want me to try my phone?
Um...
Or we can try it on my cell phone or something? I don't know.
Katrina, can you hear Doug McKinney?
I'm sorry?
Can you hear Doug McKinney?
I heard something McKinney. That's all I heard.
Okay.
Ask her to pick up the number.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna have somebody else give you a call here in a second.
Okay, we'll try that.
Okay. That's the number. And then once it picks up, that's the extension.
Eight-six-eight-one. Is that what that is?
Yep.
Katrina, Lincoln County Commission here.
Yay, it's perfect. I can hear perfectly.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you for joining us by phone.
Yeah, sorry about that. I'm not sure what was going on.
That's okay.
Uh, can you hear me, Katrina? This is Kelly?
Yes.
Okay. Um, well, I'll just do kind of a quick overview. So, a couple of weeks ago, uh, the beginning of the year, um, I was asked in a, in a meeting here about, um, that the commission knows or is, is aware that some work needs to be done on, on the building at, at that time. The, um, front steps and painting the exterior, the woodwork and any metal that, uh, might be up there, um, was kind of what was mentioned back then. And so, there was questions about what does the county need to do in order to apply for a heritage trust fund grant, um, to move forward with that work?
Okay.
So, that's kind of where we're at. I've got Doug McKinney here. Um, I don't know if you know him or not, but he works with the, uh, North Central Regional Planning Commission.
Mm-hmm, right.
The thought being that maybe they could help with an application.
Okay.
So, I guess the, the goal is, is that maybe we could just have a conversation in terms of what the steps are, what needs to be done in order to get an application put together.
Okay. Well, my, my initial recommendation would be to speak out some estimates from some contractors. Or if this is a project where, um, you think it would be best to hire a consultant of some kind, like an architect or an engineer. Um, not all projects require that level of consultation, but if you feel like it would be a valuable asset to the project, um, I would encourage you to, to go ahead and speak that kind of, um, help out. Uh, but you're gonna have to have some kind of numbers to base your, your grant application on. So, you need to have some... So you need to have some kind of estimate, whether it's talking to some contractors or getting an estimate from an architect. Um, that's gonna have to be the basis of your application. We can definitely, I'm here to provide technical assistance, so if you have questions or the contractors have questions about how should the work be done, um, I can definitely guide them towards information that the National Park Service has. Um, the, the preservation briefs outline how work we recommend work be done on historic buildings. So once you get a couple of good estimates, um, then you'll have numbers that you can write out a budget. Um, and then the application itself will be available on our website later this spring, probably late April or May. Um, we usually have a couple of workshops across the state. Last year, we did one in Lincoln. Um, this year, we probably will be somewhere in your vicinity, but I don't have those planned yet. Um, and we probably will do one by webinar as well. But all summer, um, into early fall, we take, um, draft applications. So whoever's gonna be filling out the application form can submit, um, an entire draft application or a piece of, you know, different parts of the application. To me, um, we have staff look at them, we have a couple of different people look at them, give comments. And then we return those comments back to the applicant so that they can, um, get some feedback on, you know, how things are going so far. And then applications are due on November first, so the, the November first is the hard deadline for the. They recommend that people approach an application.
Are we supposed to submit the bid of our choosing with the application?
No, what you're really looking for is an estimate, not a bid.
Okay.
Uh, because the reason being that I really need to review the scope of work before you enter into a contract with a contractor. Um, because if, if the work that they're bidding on doesn't meet the standard, then it's gonna need to be changed and that could affect the price.
So any and all, basically, I'm hearing that any and all estimates, whoever is putting these together, they need to contact you in that process of putting it together.
And/or, um, if you're working with an architect who has preservation experience or the contractor has preservation experience, then I'm assuming that they're, they're bidding, they're putting together an estimate based on work that will meet the standard.
Okay.
Um, but I'm certainly here and I can definitely review estimates and give you guys feedback, um, or talk to the contractor.
Okay.
Um, but not every project goes through that exact process, so some of the applications, like for example, we have this year, I assume when I get their scope of work, there's gonna be a couple of things that probably are gonna need to be adjusted. And that may impact their final contract. So I don't necessarily want folks to be entering into contracts or getting bid this early in advance of the, because the grants aren't gonna be awarded until February. Um, so if you got a bid in August, it may not even be valid anymore by February. Um, but if you have some estimates, then that'll give you at least something to, to base your grant application on. The grant application does, um, require or at least request that you add a twenty percent contingency to the budget. So that should, should help or take care of any of those unforeseen, you know, unexpected, um, cost increases that might pop up between November and February.
And what is the cost sharing breakdown for the total project?
The HHS grant reimburses eighty percent of the project cost up to ninety thousand dollars, which is the maximum grant amount. So in the end of the project, the applicant would have put in, they would have paid a hundred percent of the bills, but you would have been reimbursed eighty percent, so your final out of pocket would be twenty percent.
Okay.
And then that twenty percent, we can apply for state tax credits to potentially get a little bit more back from that right afterwards.
Correct. So at the, in February, let's say you get awarded a grant, there will be an orientation for the grant administrator and I'll go over, um, how that, how that process works. But basically, as you're getting your scope of work developed to hire your contractor, um, that's when you'll write up the grant, the tax credit application and we'll review all of that at once. Um, get it approved for both the grant and the tax credits. That way, when you hire your contractor and they're ready to go, you'll, you'll have all your approvals in, in hand and be ready to start work.
Um, from, from my perspective, and I might put you on the spot a little bit, Katrina, but the, the painting of the outside seems pretty straightforward to me. I mean.
Mm-huh.
Uh, but the, the front steps seems like it might be, it's a little less straightforward what the problems are.
Yeah.
And so therefore, being able to write a scope of work or getting an estimate, I mean, we, we need to provide somebody some pretty clear direction in order to get a clear estimate.
Uh-huh.
Because of that, do you think it's better to work with an architect to put together a scope of work so we could get estimates? Or do you think we, it's still just small enough that we could go to some masons or whoever to, to put together some estimates? I mean, do.
I, I think for the steps, I would recommend getting some sort of consultant, whether it's an architect or an engineer. Um, and I know that's gonna be out of pocket expense upfront ahead of the grant and the grant can't reimburse for that. You know, sort of, um, fact finding mission. Um, you could apply for tax credits for that and then roll in the rest of the work to the tax credit application later. Um, but it's probably going to be to the benefit of the project in the end to make sure that the contractor has a good understanding of what the problem is. And what a, you know, professional has proposed as a solution, so that they're not just going in there with an idea of, yeah, we're gonna, you know, slap some patching material on this and it'll be great. If they're not solving the problem, that's the, the root of the issue, then the county is just gonna see those problems come back again later and that's not gonna solve anything. Um, so that, that is a good point. I, I would recommend for steps, getting some kind of consultant, um, to kind of figure out what is the underlying problem with the condition of the steps and how are they gonna recommend fixing it?
Okay.
Yep, I believe the front steps, it's probably gonna be a total rebuild from the ground up. I don't think there's any, any solving the issue by.
Yeah. And that could be, and so you don't wanna, you don't wanna have the same problem again, so you wanna rebuild the steps in a way that's not gonna cause the same trouble again later. Um, so if, if that's the case too, you'll need somebody to design it.
Are we planning on addressing the back steps as well? I mean, I see there's an issue there with both. I think we may need to look at both simultaneously rather than put one off. Because while you have someone here, you're not paying them to come twice, in other words. But, okay, I, I think we know where we need to go.
And that'll just depend, that'll just depend on your budget too. Since the grant is only ninety thousand, um, if, if you guys can afford to put them both together into one project and if it goes over the, I think it's a hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred would be a hundred percent budget. Um, knowing that you have to pay a hundred percent of whatever's over that, that can certainly be doable.
Thank you for the information, Katrina.
Sure. You guys have any other questions right now?
Katrina, this is Doug.
Uh-huh.
It was for a completely different but very beneficial purpose, but in the late nineties, the county did have assistance through the program, it was seventy-five thousand max, for a complete sealing process around the, uh, the basement, essentially, the foundation. And the downspouts were directed to go out into the, the yard or in, into the, the subsoil far, far away because the original eighteen ninety-nine or nineteen hundred downspouts had cracked and failed. Does that, um, well, could you comment on that from your perspective? That's, that's their last heritage trust fund here at the courthouse. If there's any thoughts about that, uh, this is sort of like a phase two or three, depending on other things that have been touched base or worked on.
Do, do you mean as far as like the competitiveness of the grant?
Well, does it harm anything that they've had that experience once before? And this is building upon that or it's, it's, uh, working on additional items that need to be done at a later date, eighteen years later, kind of thing.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I definitely would, in the application, whoever ends up writing the application, maybe make a note of that, that this, this is, um, a continuation of the, the maintenance of the building and the stewardship of, of the county for their, their county courthouse building. Um, I, I don't have any notes in front of me or anything, I'm assuming that that project got administrate, administered well.
Yes.
Um, and that's, that's really, the grant committee that would review the application this year or next year, um, won't have any remembrance probably of that project, so they're probably gonna only see it on paper. Well, they, they do, they do get a note in their review materials that says whether a project has received a grant in the past.
Okay.
But if it's been eighteen years ago and there was no, you know, problem with that project, then they're probably not going to see that as a, as a, you know, as a, a negative. They're gonna see that as a, oh, okay, this county is continuing to be a good steward of their, their property.
Well, it was very worthwhile, very helpful.
Courthouse that had four grant applications funded, so, um, I don't think that's going to be a detriment to you guys.
What is the most important factor that holds weight in the competitiveness of writing the grant application?
Urgency.
Urgency.
Urgency of the project. To make the project, um, seem, and, and it is, I mean, I think this is probably an urgent project, but, um, make sure you stress to the grant committee that this is urgent, that if we don't get this fixed pretty soon, it's going to have, um, you know, it's gonna cause further problems. Um, further problems for the building, further problems for people trying to get access to the building. Um, they, they, there's a lot of different factors that they take into account. They like to see, um, public support, they like to see a benefit to the public, which this is the county courthouse, it's obviously a public building, um, so that's not gonna be hard for you guys to show. But because we have so many projects that apply and we have so little money to go around, um, they stress funding the projects that are the most urgent.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Anything else?
Well, I can think of lots of things to ask Katrina, but I won't.
All right, um, do you guys have anything else then, or?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Well, I think that's it then, Katrina.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good one.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
Alan Beach was the contractor on that project, remember Alan? And it wasn't long before his heart attack and passed away. So it's been a few years. But very worthwhile, so I remember that every time it rained, there'd be Deborah up here, Kathy Nielsen, it's raining, get ready, kind of thing, and water would come in by here.
They were in the process of doing, and I started working here because my first day, I remember the whole outside of the courthouse was completely torn up and they were doing, they were in the midst of that project.
It was pretty wide, pretty big deal.
Question I have was, we did the back steps, the, do they really need to be done here?
There's some deterioration there. If you already have someone here working on the front steps, they should look at the back.
And that might have been one of those cosmetic, it was, because they were just kind of falling apart and instead of replacing the whole steps, it was kind of a capping or patching. It was similar to what Mitchell County and Clay County did on some steps.
And do they have the.
They replaced the entire steps.
Did they replace the whole steps?
But is there caulking in the corners? Because that was one of the things they said when they visited, that needs to be removed and, and not used.
I don't know what's there, but I can tell you.
I can't remember right now.
Ninety percent of the problem on the back and the deterioration is the fact that the janitors refuse to remove the salt.
Oh.
You guys would tell the janitors to get that salt off, that would be extremely helpful. I can tell them, but they won't listen to me.
That needs to draw to somebody's attention before you spend a lot of money on the steps and then keep throwing the salt out there.
We tried to buy that special salt that's supposed to help, but you still have to get out there after the ice has gone and sweep all that off. You have to be deliberate.
Well, the problem back there, it gets no sunshine and the salt just reoccurs.
That's the same Mitchell, Clay, I don't know, a few others. Just large structures and limestone doesn't care for that kind of deterioration.
And limestone and salt, there's still. I don't know, hot water, pecks, that'd be anything to consider in there for its melting. It's possible. You can, you can either do water or an electric match, you can put in there too.
So what's the next step?
I think we need to have a list of contractors to contact, so who, who do we want to start with locally?
Contractors or consultants slash architects?
Well, we won't need a consultant for the painting, so that can definitely be a contact primary to the contractor. And I also think we need to at least look into people who have experience with preservation, I mean, they're out there.
Oh, yeah.
So we, it doesn't mean we can't contact them before we look at some kind of consultant. We can at least be communicating with them and see what they say and compare that to what we may find out from some sort of architect. Because I would say that the person who's hands-on has just as much knowledge as the person who draws up the plans. So who, do you have some suggestions for at least initial contacts?
I don't know, about Travis or Shortfugger locally. I mean, there are several around, but, uh, I'm sure we can get a list.
I don't know if, if he used to live in Sylvan, but an associate of Randy Schroeder's is in Ellsworth, that's, uh, I just lost his name. But it's Central Kansas Contracting and, oh.
I'm not familiar with.
I wanna say James, uh, can't think of his last name now, but he's Ellsworth-based. He does limestone work, like Travis does. I wish I could remember his last name.
Where'd you get it?
John Pankost, Blue Stent Quarry.
Yeah.
Yeah, this, this Russell, Ellsworth, Lincoln area has a few, so. Oh, I'll think of this in twenty-three minutes, but James is all right.
Well, that's three, can you think of someone else?
What's that?
Can you think of anyone else? We have Blue Stents, Central Kansas Contracting.
Not right off the top of my head, but I'm sure we can get the names.
Who else for painting?
For as big of a building as this, I don't know. It's not gonna be your out of the mill guy, I would guess.
They'll need to be capable of bonding and insurance for any public entity, but it, or working at heights and scaffolding.
We can get a list of painting contractors.
The Kansas Historical Society, they do have a list of contractors that they frequently work with through their grant program, so we can go through that as well. The problem is that most of them aren't necessarily here, they're gonna be Kansas City or whatever, and so the likelihood that they'll just come out here to.
But we could pick a few off the list to at least contact.
We can select some that are relatively close.
Would you please bring that list to us?
Yeah.
I think somebody in Salina would think.
Yeah.
I don't know that Chuckie Deers up in Beloit, he'd have insurance, but as far as the, the other side, he has the equipment to get out, but. Concordia, there's one or two.
So are we going to assign someone to draft a letter to request estimates?
Another.
With the details of what we're looking at?
We, uh, I think we've been working with Kelly on that probably as far as.
How much, so when you guys get into the grant administration stuff, can you guys come in at this level or is it more the actual application?
Whatever you want in project planning, we're okay, so.
I think in the past, you've provided some contractors for us to.
Yeah, I'm sure we have a list or two at the office.
Yeah.
That on our network that we have. I'll think of James's name too. It's one, it's a name that's familiar to Lincoln County, but I just knew him because they worked on a project in Sylvan Grove and up in Beloit. And I know he's down in Elsworth, and he's done support haze campus.
He's working in Denmark.
That's that John Pankost with that Blue Stent Quarry up at the lake.
Painters, I'm sure there's plenty around.
And that's their historical society, right?
No, they're not. No, they're not. At this time, they're not getting any funding for them, so. But I believe that he has worked on other projects that have.
Preservation projects.
Yeah, so I would bet that he knows what's going on.
And as you saw mentioned at, towards the base of Kelly's email, if there's something that is more urgent that you need to get done this summer per se, that preservation tax credit, which is twenty-five cents they provide on the dollar, that's quicker, it's faster. Usually it's quicker after July first, the state fiscal year, but they may still have some funds there to take notice of. And might be able to do a small job with that.
I don't think the steps, I mean, I don't think it's that urgent, that I can't wait for the bigger, bigger grant.
But the urgency within the application is that deterioration is going to be happening this, with the rest of this winter and next winter while we wait on the actual funding, which will be until she's in February. So that is the problem right there, I think, as far as establishing urgency. And I would say we just put together this list of contractors and draft this letter requesting estimates.
Two, three months ago.
Right? But that's perfect, because as long as she said late April, so.
Yeah, so we'll work together on it.
Thank you so much.
Between now and the twenty-second, I'll be able to look, I think, so. See who's what, so.
Appreciate the help.
Contractors are looking for work, I would think, so at this time of year, they might not be as busy.
They might have the time to do the asked ones.
They're looking for work, but they don't have the weather to do it right now.
Getting ideas for about a year from now, really.
Yeah.
Or longer, fifteen months. Opportunity. Glad Deborah could remember.
Her first day on the job.
Yeah.
I, I remember Alan, and I remember the courthouse.
Yeah, it wasn't a couple of years later, he was gone, so he would've been one estimate-wise. Others have come in since. All right.
Okay.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Couple of years.
Deborah, I believe you're up. I left mine on my desk, so.
Oh, you did?
But I didn't see anything really that stuck out, I mean.
Well, the first thing we should address, could we go back to the janitor's? Um, it's on job description. It's, it's on, I, it's not in the email I received.
Wanted to think.
I have appraiser clerk, human resources clerk.
No, who did his, like, that, that was one of the first ones.
Right, right, so if we could just briefly touch on that and put an asterisk and make it an essential function, and then it can be notified to-
Salt and remove snow and implement, implement weather. Um, yes, and I think that, um, what she was just trying to say is that, um, sometimes you just need that reinforcement from you guys. And, and I don't think that it's intentional, but just need that reinforcement, that that's got to get cleaned off as soon as. And it does stay dark, doesn't get as much sun back there, so it stays frozen longer and whatnot. Just needs that reinforcement.
Right, so there might be a necessary bullet point that says preservation of the steps is necessary, it's a historical building, and you must, you know, maintain the steps in, in that fashion. Uh-oh, I think Sean left his mouse, computer mouse. And that would be an appropriate way to address the current custodian by saying, you know, we wanted to add this to your job description, make it very clear to you.
Preservation of the historical nature of the building, including, yep, okay. Seeing as though, as I think what she was trying to allude to being as it's that time of year, wouldn't hurt to have that quick conversation as a reminder, maybe from someone to-
We could do that.
That would be great.
Donna Strumpel here today?
Yeah, I guess so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And like I said, I don't think it's intentional that it doesn't occur. I think that it just, that reinforcement.
No, it's very important. It's more important in a situation like this than it would be on the regular sidewalk.
Yes, yes. I made the changes that you recommended, um, for, um, the EMS service, putting the certification first in the, like driver's license and whatnot second. I made those changes, um, so I've updated those. And the ones that I emailed you guys was, um, uh, like the courthouse positions. Do you have, do you need me to get you fresh coffee? You're okay? Okay.
I'm fine.
Will you hand that to Dawn, please? Dawn, I think this is Sean's. I thought this was interesting, under the appraiser, the clerk position, under marginal functions, the first bullet point is attends departmental training sessions. Um, while this is a good idea for any position, I'm just wondering how are we identifying or specifying trainings? And this just goes back to all the positions, not necessarily this one in particular. I just, I saw that on there as it's listed first.
Yes, it is.
Marginal.
It, I think it's similar on most, um, because like this one here, attends departmental training and educational sessions for department employees. Um, most, most of them, um, I think there might have been one or two that I saw that didn't- now that's on that one too. I think most, all of them, we tried to make sure that was on. Yes, hers just might not be worded the same as some of the others. And it's, so the one we do do department-wide or county-wide training, it's to let employees know what's their responsibility and their duty and their job to attend. And I don't know that there's ever been a time that their staff hasn't attended anything that's provided, so.
Yeah, I guess I'm just wondering, do, do we have any requirements? I haven't really noticed that in any of the positions we've had any requirements as far as, you know, you must attend one session per year, or you must complete, you know, we don't have any in-house training, obviously, but is that going to be a consideration?
Well, they do to a certain extent. I mean, if Dawn goes to a meeting and she comes back with some information, I'm sure she shared it with her staff.
She usually sits down and goes over with us, like she goes to the clerks association meeting and she'll come back and she'll say, there's some new changes that are coming regarding this or this, and we're gonna start doing things this way now. And, oh, they made recommendations that we conduct things this way now, different things like that.
Right, and that's-
We've been to, um, I know that, I think Hannah went the last time to go to, uh, the updated information on completing, like the home stand, the food sales tax refunds that we did for, for residents. I've been to them a couple of times, and some different things like that.
That's great. I mean, I think that's important if you're, especially if your department had to go through the training, coming back and talking to the staff. Um, I don't know if it was last week or the week before, when we talked about sending emergency management out to Colorado, and I said, okay, if we're gonna do this, you know, are you gonna come back and share some of the information? And the response was, well, well, if you're not certified to do a training, then, you know, but looking at the bigger picture, if we have a position where there's one person and they're getting that education, where does that go when that person leaves? It goes with them, and it's not shared internally. So I think there does need to be some discussion about, you know, department meetings, just like, you know, you can hold your own whenever you see fit, but it, does there need to be some kind of clarification, specification about having a department meeting? I mean, I think with the discussion last year, um, I had suggested to have the highway department meeting, and they do have them, but they're based on particular issues. Like they had a training meeting and that was like equipment operation, so that's specific to one thing. Do, do we need to establish an annual, you know, some sort of annual meeting? I know you're doing every October.
We do one every October. Um, we usually, like this year, um, we did a, every year it's a little different. Depends upon, um, like, no offense, if Dawn, if LaDonna or David has something new that they feel like we need to go over, if our work comp, our liability insurance suggests some new, new trainings that we should, um, offer. We do defensive driving every other year for county employees. We sometimes do, like, we did, have done like harassment training, you know, different, different types of trainings. And generally, things that are county-wide, we do in October, when we know that we're all gonna be getting together then at that point anyways. Is that what you mean, or?
Well, for example, in your job description for human resources, we have one person doing human resources. And so your last bullet point here is arranges training and educational sessions for county employees. Does that mean that every department is gonna come to you and say, hey, could you schedule and arrange, you know, a training session on da-da-da for this year?
The ones that, LaDonna will usually ask me what I'm planning, if I'm planning anything for the year, and if so, she knows what in a way. Because she tries to do a little something with her employees, I think, monthly. And it depends upon what they're topic and where they're at in their year as to what's coming up next that they're working on. Um, the sheriff's departments, they do, they have employee meetings, some training-based, um, some information-based, just depends upon where they're at and the need. Um, they do annual firearms certification, they do some things. EMS meets every month, so they're doing, um, monthly training and monthly meetings with their employees. And they do more than, it's more than just training, um, but it gives them the opportunity to always get continuing education hours. Michael does, at the Roden Bridge, they do different things through work comp, um, different things. Like you said, they did some motor grader training, they'll do some different things like that. And usually when they do that, he has like housekeeping, you know, he'll go over anything new that they've got going on or changes that they wanna make, or, you know, time to visit with the employees. Uh, one of the latest things they did was on that tablet training, and they did some different things that day as well. Is that?
I think why it's on her job description is if the department head needs help finding the source of training that they're looking for, then she facilitates that if she needs to. Otherwise, each of the departments conduct their own training.
And the things that are county-wide, we take care of.
Well, this goes back to us putting into the department head job descriptions that they're going to be reporting to us on a regular basis, like we said once a month. Because that updates us and they can say, hey, we've done training on this, we've done training on that. You know, this is what we're planning to do, or these are the projects that we've completed in the past month. That kinda gives us an update. Otherwise, what we're looking at is just kind of each person deciding whether or not they even wanna have training. And I'm not saying that the current ones don't, but the whole purpose of a job description is so that, just as Sean said earlier, he said, they've put together this entire database for his job, this mapping and all of the information, so that if he's gone, the next person just can come in and pick up where he left off, because all the information is right there. It's not particular to the person doing the job. It's not a, it's not about job preservation, it's about job efficiency. So I think having the requirements that they, you know, do participate in some sort of training, not necessarily us deciding which training, but just that training is mandatory, whatever that means for that particular department. And if you're overseeing that, or use the word arranging that, that could be part of something that you report to us as well, I guess. You know, the, these particular departments have done X, Y, and Z training for the year 2017, or in this particular month, et cetera. I think that just helps form an oversight. What, what I've seen in the past year is just a lack of oversight. And everyone can say, oh, it's just because we trust everyone that's doing their job, but that, again, that's not the point. The point is, at some, at some time increment, the job changes, whether it's the person or, um, the technology or whatever it may be. When that job changes, the whole point is to have this outlined in saying, if you're going to come in and do this, then this is required. Just like in EMS, you're saying now they're having monthly-
They have always had. I don't know when they didn't. Uh, there might have been like a time that they didn't do them every month.
When the previous administrator left, the training license lapsed.
But they-
They didn't do training.
That was for a few months, I believe, is all that it really was that they didn't. And they offer their employees the option to come in for training or to do online training based on which-
You're saying currently? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Regardless, if, if it can be seen that that particular position is not fulfilling those requirements, then that should be addressed. Speaking of which, are, are we going to set some sort of rotational schedule or ask, like, send out a letter to inform department heads of just giving us updates so that we are made aware? Because I think we saw LaDonna in January.
We've seen David.
Yeah, well, he comes in, he comes in pretty regularly.
More than, uh, more than anyone, um.
But Michael hasn't given us any sort of, um, compacted information as far as, I mean, he's reported on current activities.
I would say you probably should communicate with them in some way, because some of them don't know what is it that you want.
Right.
Other than just them to show up once a month.
So can we ask you to draft us a letter that can be sent out? I think that might be appropriate for human resources to contact.
I can, I can.
Leanne was here last week, or looking forward, I don't remember who.
Yes, you're right, and she did the quarterly reports and talked about doing a, a column, giving the balance on the funds for the totals.
January twenty-second, yeah.
I can do that.
So if you would please send that out to all non-elected departments?
Okay.
Just saying, just, you know, the commission is requesting that you give a monthly progress report.
Progress, okay.
Mm-hmm, or activity report, some, something of that nature. It doesn't necessarily have to be-
Uh, some of them, every department's a little different, um, you know, like for instance, Ron just said, what do I tell them about? And I said, tell them what's going on. And she said, you know, sometimes during the year they're doing different things. And I said, that would be good to tell them where you're at in, in, in your process for the year and what you're doing now. And I said, it might take you five minutes and it might take you ten minutes, and you're just, and that was what I suggested to her, so.
Well, it's pretty typical protocol. I mean, you guys-
Different things, different times.
It's new, so this is why, like, she was one that asked, you know, what kinds of things would they like to know? You know, she's a small department, there's just her and, and two other people, so she just, you know.
I understand that, but in the grand scheme of things, you know, it's been decades of that particular position and the commission, and it's an appointed position, it's not even elected. So if someone is appointed, then it's more than obvious that they need to be reporting to the board.
Right, and her question was, what is it that you wanted, what did I think that you wanted her to report?
Well, she's always come in periodically on different things.
But when you're talking once a month, she was just curious, what kinds of things were you looking for? What kinds of things were you wanting to know? When she asked for some guidance as to what I thought you would like for input and for updates. She was one that asked.
So on that note, I was reading under, um, human resources job description, which would be you. It says, um, under marginal functions, assists auditor? I'm just curious about that.
We all do that. Whatever they ask for, for information, we provide. And they ask for a lot of like payroll information, benefit information, things like that.
The auditor wants to know about benefits?
Yes.
Because?
Because they're doing an audit, and during the audit, that's what, they look at everything. They look at what are we paying for insurance, the-
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, you're talking about, okay.
The county audit.
Okay, I understand, I understand. And, and you're saying like overall financial information?
Yeah, well, they ask for all sorts of things. They ask for copies of, of like our certificates of coverage for work comp and, and K-work, uh, K-camp and all sorts of things like that, and whatever they ask for, I provide.
Okay, I think it should say provides information to auditor. Assist auditor gives the, it, it gives the appearance that you're working with the auditor on the audit, and that is very inappropriate, in my opinion. So I would say that you provide information to the auditor. That way, that puts you out of the category of being assumed to having anything to do with preparing the audit itself.
Well, I think it's basically the same thing, it's just different.
That, I can change the provision.
No, that's not the same thing at all. If, if I was down here working with the auditor on the audit, it would be very suspicious that I was helping to review numbers, change numbers, put, you know. If, if you're, if you're asked for a report, you know, or a certification and you print it out and you hand it to them-
That's what we do.
That's providing information.
They gather information here and go back and complete the audit.
But when you use, when you say assist the auditor, that's like saying you assist the clerk. But when you use, when you say assist the auditor, that's like saying you assist the clerk. You are her employee, you assist the clerk and you do things.
Like I said, I was glad to reword that, that's not a problem.
You don't understand? Is that why you had the head shake?
No, it's just, it's just different verbiage. I mean, it's.
Okay, and what's mean?
Providing information to the auditor and assisting them.
It's not assisting him with his job. And that's very different. If, if I wanted someone to assist me, I would hire an assistant and they are working for me. We need to be very clear that the county is not working for the auditor. That in and of itself is, is a huge problem. I mean, when you call for an audit on your company, on, on your government entity, it's not to be a relationship where there's sharing of information other than one person is requesting it and one person is giving it.
That is what occurs. They ask for information and we provide it. That is what we do. We're in, in no way are we altering or doctoring or making any inappropriate changes or anything of that nature.
And I'm asking, I'm asking you to, to change that so that it, so that it appears clear.
That's why I said I would gladly change that, that's fine.
Right. And I, is this register of deeds clerk, is that because we have our appraisers secretary also working in the register of deeds office?
She, she is entitled to have a staff member for when she needs assistance, when she's gone, things like that. And at this time, rather than hiring somebody from outside, um, she employs, they share an employee. It used to be somebody from the treasurer's office that helped for some time and for a while that was, that assisted when she was gone. And now it's the person from the appraiser's office. It works well, there's no need to have hired somebody else. The offices, the offices work well together.
So just, are, are we going to qualify that this is a part-time position in this, um, job description?
I can.
Cause I don't think I see that in there.
Typically, the state statute says that we're required to provide her with a full-time person. So I would be, maybe a little hesitant to.
The state statute says you must provide a full-time employee to your register of deeds? Where is that?
I'd have to get you this.
We'd have to get, yeah, I don't, I don't have that. I know that the statute says, but it is never.
So is, is there a state statute that says that we have to provide the appraiser a full-time employee?
I don't know.
Well, if that's the case, shouldn't we be looking at hiring the full-time employee under the register of deeds and then have her working part-time under the appraiser?
She does significantly, she doesn't help. She doesn't work that many hours in the register of deeds office, it's very limited.
I'm, I'm talking about being in, um, compliance with the state statute.
I would have to read the statute. Like she said, she doesn't have the number off the top of her head. We will, we can look at it.
Yeah, please, please bring that one back. I think we should really address that. It would be more appropriate in my mind if there's not a state statute to require someone to be full-time in the appraiser's office, that we assign her full-time in the register of deeds and then she can do work for the appraiser under that pretense. If you're, if you're sharing an employee secretary position like that, which I'm not opposed to the sharing, I'm just saying.
It works well.
Shouldn't we, but shouldn't we be in compliance with where she's being hired? Because if the state demands that there's a, which to me is just ridiculous anyhow, but. If that's the demand, then we should make sure that we've arranged it that way on paper, especially.
I, I believe that Tantin would be able to probably find the statute easily and we'll, we'll look at that and read that back next week.
That's interesting. I was wondering, um, I've been asked several times by different people if, when they get their tax bill, they could also have their property record card for the property.
I would refer them to the county appraiser.
Right, but I'm saying we can easily mail that out.
I would refer, that's not my job. You can have talk to the county appraiser about that. That doesn't really have anything to do with job descriptions and you.
Well, I'm only addressing it to Terry, not you, so.
Or I just.
I'm wondering how we could go about that. I mean, it might be a good idea to, um, you know, we, we, we mail out what, twice a year? So the initial one for the year, or now that we're past that, you know, maybe the, the second round for the year. It might be, it might be a good idea, it might be a smart move on our part to just provide that information.
Sometimes I can discuss whether when she comes in for.
Yeah, it might be.
Multitasking.
Yeah, I think that would be the thing for you guys. I, I have no idea. I don't even know what they are. I get my valuation notice and I usually look at that and then I get my tax statement in the fall and I usually look at that.
Okay, so the deputy county treasurer, I was wondering, and maybe I missed it, but is that an appointed position? Is that, does that mean that's appointed? So the treasurer has employees and does the, does the treasurer appoint a deputy? And then hire the, what did we call it, a clerk? Is that, will we?
Um, well, like for instance, um, Leanne was Joyce's deputy. And so she acted basically in her stead when she was gone. She was in charge of the office when Joyce was gone. And when she took over, she appointed Mary Ann, who was already working. And then she filled the, the position. Is that what you?
I'm saying we have two positions under the county treasurer. We have the deputy and then we have office staff. But, I mean, I think you worded it as clerk. And so what we're saying is the treasurer appoints a deputy. So could we add appointed by the treasurer under that job description? This, you know, under the supervision of Lincoln County Treasurer, the deputy county treasurer is a non-exempt position under FLSA, appointed by the county treasurer. This position performs administrative and skilled duties, ensures compliance with Kansas law for collection, administration, and distribution of county and state monies. This employee handles various job responsibilities, including handling daily bookkeeping of many accounts, assisting customers with tag sales, collecting taxes, and renewing driver's licenses.
And is it, is it responsible for the administrative duties in the, in the absence of the county treasurer? Okay.
I just think it's important to think that it's.
We can put appointed by treasurer.
And then I, another thing I saw under that one, um, I think it, okay, under essential functions, it says, serves as notary public. But then I don't think we have that under a, a requirement for education or skill or some, I don't know what you want to list that as. Certification or, what is that called? You just register?
You fill out the paperwork.
So I'm saying, but that's not on there as far as a requirement. It says serves as, I mean, you can imply that, but if you were looking under, okay, what do I have to have?
It's not really a technical skill because the person doesn't, they're not, we don't, they don't become a notary until we hire them. And then we.
Do we pay for that?
Yes, like fifty dollars every four years, is that what? Yeah.
So everybody that, that serves as a notary public, they can get that certification paid for by the county?
It's not really a certification.
What is it called? I don't know what it's called.
It's a bond.
You're bonded and you can notarize documents. I guess I'm struggling with how to explain. We just, we can.
Registration, you're registered, you have to be registered. I mean, what is the?
Yeah, you, we go to the insurance.
So you call it bond registration, I guess, something like that? But that is paid for by the county for every employee who has it?
For, not for, not everyone is.
For every employee that has it.
Yes.
Yes.
And so who are we requiring, I guess is where I'm going with that.
She has.
We have the treasurer?
The treasurer's office and the treasurer's office, it's not a reason.
Yeah.
Every staff member?
Yes.
And is anyone else eligible to just do that and bill it to the county? Or how, how does that work?
We don't.
Like if the appraiser said, well, hey, you know, I want to be able to notarize and then can, I mean, is that something the county's?
I guess they could, they just haven't because we always have been.
And our offices are all open during the noon hour.
And then anyone from the public that needs a notary, they know they can come. And we let people know, if somebody calls, can I get them notarized? We tell them where they can go in the courthouse to have something notarized.
Well, it's very nice that we do it for free to the public because, I mean, where I come from, you, you have to pay. No one would do that for free. I mean, that is, that is a nice service that we provide.
I'm not sure. I, I think the, the banks, I think the banks have, have, have a person or maybe several, maybe more than one, I'm not sure.
I've never lived anywhere except for here where it's free to go.
Insurance offices, lawyers offices, banks, no one's ever charged me for it.
Yeah, it's amazing, really.
I think it was, they can charge two dollars or something. I think they could if they wanted to or something.
We don't, I mean. And we're open, like she said, during lunch, so anyone that needs it. You know, if the district court has somebody who comes in and they need somebody to notarize, they send them down. And we will do that.
So how are we differentiating between hourly and salary positions?
What do you mean?
Okay, so I noticed, you know, last year, there was a change at the very beginning of the year. If I'm, if I have my timing correct, that we, like in the highway department, we changed certain positions from hourly to salary and others from salary to hourly. And so that's not addressed in, in these job descriptions. I'm not saying it has to be. But from my own knowledge and just as a, to set a parameter for working.
Elected officials are on, are salaried employees and then, um, the, the full-time department heads are.
That are exempt from overtime.
Yes, yes. Yes, and then, um.
How, who, how are we establishing who is exempt from overtime and who is not?
It's based upon fairly recent standards rulings.
The what?
Fairly recent standards rulings.
This FLSA?
Yes, they have classifications, they have exemptions. And if the position falls within that exemption, then they are exempt from overtime. And they're paid, paid solely their salary. And then other employees are on a salary, yet they're not exempt and they still receive overtime.
So when you have the sentence in there, this is a non-exempt position under FLSA?
That means that they work over forty hours per week.
And there are a few employees that are on salary, even though they qualify for overtime. And that was just the choice of the board to do that rather than to.
Say that again, please?
There are employees who, like Debra, for example, is on salary. When we chose to try to move to a human resource department, that's what the board at that time decided that they wanted to do with that. Rather than paying her, cause she's half clerk's employee, half human resource is how her time is allotted. So rather than giving her a split pay, they chose to pay her a salary.
Yes, but I am entitled to overtime if I work over forty hours a week, based on the classification of my position. The other one would be the office manager at Public Works. They chose to, we chose, the county chose to make that a salaried position, but it is not exempt from overtime. All the other salaried positions are exempt from overtime. Does that make any sense?
Yeah, because you're saying according to the state standard established by this FLSA, or no, federal.
It's federal, it's okay.
That, that when you're not exempt, you're eligible for overtime.
Yes.
And I'm not really sure why they chose to move if you're talking about obnoxious weed. I don't remember when we pushed him back, but, but the landfill operator has never been salaried. We don't, I don't really know why, so I think that's part of the reason why they moved.
Yes, it seemed to be inconsistent with the way that we were functioning. We had two different, and well, and they were, at one time, they were two different department heads. One on hourly wage, one on a salary. And the salary person wasn't exempt from overtime anyway, so it didn't make any sense. And then when everything was encompassed by Public Works, it made more sense to be more consistent and to treat them the same.
Well, just on that topic, so, so your, so your salary, and let me go back to that really quickly. I guess, just a little clarification. I don't think I saw on any of these, and I didn't catch it earlier in any of the other departments, but I don't think I'm seeing any required amount of time. So we're assuming that these are forty hours a week. There are no requirements. So at this point, if we saw someone only putting in thirty hours, there's no way to reprimand as far as losing time.
It's not in their job description, it's in the handbook and, um, it's.
Okay.
Employment practice.
Okay.
But no, it's not on the job description, but.
Okay.
If they, if they do not, they can be reclassified as part-time.
Yes.
Yeah. Like our full-time employees in the handbook, it says most work forty hours per week. And then if they don't have leave time to accommodate that, then they're allowed five days, I think.
Up to forty hours a, a, a year.
A year in which they can take time without pay and not affect their classification as a full-time employee.
And then if they get beyond the five days, then they lose their health insurance benefits.
Wait, okay, start over. You're saying, okay, so the forty hours is established in the handbook, I forgot about that.
That's okay.
So they have up to five days. So you could use one per week that would.
Five days per year.
I'm saying.
In which they would, we, it's in the handbook and I can't remember if it's five days or forty hours in which time without pay.
So you can just opt to not come to work and say, don't pay me?
No, no, they have to use their leave time, but it's for the people that have.
Exhaust their leave time.
Yeah. Because.
Okay, so you've used up all your leave time for the year and it's December fifth and you want to take off. You can have an additional five days, but you don't get paid for it.
Correct.
Sort of.
Correct. If you don't have leave time, you get, you're allowed five days to take off. If, if you don't have leave time.
And when you come back to work, you're still a full-time employee.
Yes, but if they, if they, if they, they earn twelve hours every month, so no one should have no time. Each month they should have at least the twelve they earned the month before.
So they use the twelve for December and the first week and then the second week comes along and they want the five, and they get the five days.
And they got really sick and they couldn't come to work.
But you don't get paid for it. But you're still a full-time employee. And then you're saying there's a clause that says we can reduce you.
Yes.
If you've missed, then you can be reduced to part-time, which then you lose your benefit package.
Yes. Yes, so that we don't have people who abuse the leave time policy where they're taking an exorbitant amount of time off, not getting paid and still get to be considered full-time and receive the same benefits as somebody else. This kind of curtails that, it kind of.
Well, I mean, it's a pretty generous leave time benefit, everything, package, I mean.
And honestly, that came about because we had employees that, that didn't, didn't mind not working forty hours a week. And they might work thirty-seven and they might work thirty-six. And that kind of defeats the purpose of everybody else that gives their time and works the forty hours a week.
Well, defeats the purpose of offering a benefits package, that's for sure.
That's how that policy came about, so that way it held some teeth.
Yes.
But did it count for sometimes if there is, you know, a true situation in which an employee just does not have any need to?
And becomes terribly ill or something of that nature and they truly shouldn't be or can't be at work.
Under the secretary for the clerk, it also says assist auditor. You might want to say, you want to change that.
I will, I will be consistent with that, yes.
Okay, are we down, what are we down to after?
This is it. This is the last of them. I'll bring the statute regarding, um, the register of deeds, so we can see what, if anything, would need to be addressed there next week.
Can we follow up on that? Janitorial requirement there too, that way it's.
I made a note, I'll change that one as well.
And then the letter, if you would please?
Yes, you said to include, um, um, activities or active, activities or progress report. Do you want to look at it first or you just want me to do something basic and send out to them?
I think you can send it.
Okay, and do you want them to start coming then, starting March? Or, cause by the time. Or, because by the time they get something, it'll be mid-February, anyway, I mean, later this.
Yeah, try to figure out with them to where they don't all show up on one day or whatever, kind of spread them out a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, all need to come on the same day.
Okay, I will, I can put that in the letter that try to spread out, but be consistent and come at least once during the month. And not all come on the same day. We can do that.
And if they have no Mondays available, I mean, they can always send something for us to look at. I think that's.
So it would be okay for me to say that if on a, if on occasion.
Yeah, if you're unavailable that month, just send it to us.
Just as long as it's not on a regular basis that they're not coming.
Well, yeah, I mean, we'd like to see them. I think that's important to have communication. But obviously, you know, if you have something come up on the day that you planned and then you don't have any other openings on a Monday, because we're at ten to noon or ten to one on Monday.
Right, but you don't want, you don't want them to say, I'm busy every Monday and I can't ever come. But yes, if on occasion, okay, I can include that as well. So they can occasionally send an update. And I can let, want to know that you are, want to discuss that first one about mailing the cards.
Yes.
Can be prepared for that conversation. Okay. So she won't be taken aback by that, okay? Okay, well, I will bring the statute next week and I'll clean up the last of them. Do you want me to print like copies of, of all the ones that are, now that they're done for you or you're okay? Okay, okay, sounds good. Okay, see you next week.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Hey Alexis, you got something today?
Yes, um. What would you like to do as far as having a discussion about the temporary fixes that keep happening to, I think we said it was number sixty-seven, Bridge sixty-seven? The first one where the lake lets out to the river?
Yeah, I think they were working on, on a plan for that, but I haven't seen it.
I didn't put a number on that because I couldn't. The road, I didn't have Katie's letter, but the roads that she cited did correlate with that OS sixty-seven, so I wasn't really sure if that was the right bridge. I know OS sixty-six was closed because I had that in mind, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure which, which bridge she was talking about.
It does, because she's.
You're talking about the River Bridge?
Well, she said between Hawk and Jaguar, so that's sixty-seven. Then between Jaguar and Kiowa was the one she was talking about, that's sixty-six that's closed. So the, the sixty-six, they're both on twentieth.
Okay.
So sixty-six is the north one that's closed and sixty-seven is directly to the south where the.
I might not have caught that she was talking about them both being on twentieth.
They both are.
Because I had the other two roads almost like this.
No, they're both on twentieth and the north one's closed and she's saying that the sixty-seven is the bridge where the water is being let out at different times of the year and creating a, a a flow and a pool that's deteriorating the, the banks.
I think the river's trying to change course there too.
So then the other one, I'd like to talk about that and it would be sixty-five. And that is the most westward. It's on Kiowa. And it is the, the farthest west bridge. And there definitely needs to be some addressing to that. It's not closed and it needs some work and it was brought to my attention just this past week. That is the only road between the two pavements of eighteen and one eighty-one to get to two thirty-two. And so the deterioration there, I think, needs to be looked at as far as what absolutely needs to be done, what can be done. What did I say? That number was sixty-five?
Yeah, I think it's, it's probably a replacement.
This is also a fracture critical bridge.
Yeah.
And so when are we going to kind of make it a necessity that we get, you know, a handful of these looked at and develop a, an estimate, a plan for them and see where we can combine efforts? Just, you know, as it was mentioned last week, we're going to hire subcontractors, someone to come in and do the piling. When are we going, you know, to establish that these three bridges we could combine to do this, you know, amount of piling at once in these different areas?
I doubt if we can build that bridge that you're talking about. I think that's going to have to be contracted. I think the size of it is out of our scope.
I was looking for the, um, the details on it. What, what are you saying? We're, we're able to build now?
What's that?
What size are you saying that we do have the capacity to?
Oh, I think we could probably go up to fifty foot or forty foot or somewhere near. Fifty might be pushing. It's a manpower issue and equipment issue. You get to a certain size, you have to have a crew. And you can't build those big bridges with three or four man crew.
So this sixty-five on Kiowa that I'm talking about, it's saying that it's a sufficiency rating, you know, forty, thirty-eight point nine percent and average daily traffic about fifty. And again, I think we should look at that as far as if we do want to have accurate numbers, we can request that in some other way. But looking at the location of it and that there is no other access point to the west as a throughway unless you go, I mean, I think there's a nine mile stretch or something that, between there that that's the only throughway. And there was another one in my district too that someone else brought up to me and I have to look at the road here. What's the one that we just replaced? Was that on iron to the east of, of one twenty? Is this the one that we just replaced?
Yes.
I'm going to have to look at that again until I get you, because I didn't look up the number of it. But I had talked about each of us coming in with some ideas, you know, and I would say that's one in my area that needs to be addressed somehow, whether it's prepare the bid so that we know what the cost is that we're looking at. This one says it's sixty feet.
Yeah, that's, that's current footage. The new one will have to be longer, I'm sure, because the way the standards have changed is the openings and stuff like that. It will probably be wider. That's kind of an odd deal out there, the way that bridge is sitting in the road on like a skew and it's on an uphill side. It's kind of a different situation. We were out and looked at it, uh, when it got put on the fracture critical list, moving up.
Okay, I think we're still confused about what fracture critical means though. Because your explanation was that once it gets to a certain point, it's considered fracture critical.
If any one component fail, or if a component fails, the entire bridge will fail, that's.
So we learned something, that's great. Okay, so it's, it's definitely on the list. Is there another bridge that you have in mind other than the one, the trash bridge that we talked about? People hauling their trash to the landfill from town? Or did you have?
Not anything specific. I know that the bridge we're talking about is one that we've been looking at out there as far as having it replaced. I think it's one of those, to make it sufficient, it's not a repair deal, it's a replace deal.
Is that, is that my little?
That comes out in.
Yes. It used to be Eighteen Highway years ago.
Well, I guess, you know, I'm just going to reiterate, my major concern is that we have to have this working list of the ones that we want to see addressed. What those associated costs are going to be, what our projection is on a time and how much of this is going to be, you know, subbed out? If any of these we are capable of doing at this time. And then what the engineering costs are going to be associated with that. So Dawn, do you happen to know? Because I don't think it's been reported, the commission, I don't know if you know, but do you happen to know when we're going to be seeing Tanner Yost? Since we approved that contract for him to come once a month?
I know he, um, they wanted to wait till they got that resolution done and then I think they were going to start the next month since they were about halfway through. So I'm assuming this.
In February, maybe?
Resolution in January.
It's been.
I had you sign something, yeah.
It's been two weeks at least, so.
I think they were going to wait until February first, but that's kind of the last that I knew.
Okay.
That I can find out.
That would be good to know, just because I think those are, these are some of the preliminary discussions we can have with him. We're already paying for his time. You know, he can help us identify this list and the prioritization categories that we need to be looking at. And have you spoken with the highway department as far as any updates on what we were going to continue to address? We were just kind of nicknaming it the Whacker Project, but we were.
I haven't, except for what was discussed in here.
Okay, so that's something else on my list that we need to follow up with. I know they.
I know they were, they were planning, I think, on doing the one this year at least, the one between the highway and there.
But that's just a culvert, correct?
Yeah, it's a big steel culvert that I think they're going to use the one that we sent back down there to get floors.
It might be the right size to use again or to.
I think it was. I'm pretty sure when the engineer was here last time, he thought it was sufficient.
Well, those would be good things to know. I'd be, I'm looking forward to being able to ask him some questions and see what he can put together for us as far as information. That map that Sean brought in today for looking at the different water treatment systems and things like that, that's very helpful. I think that's what I'd like to see happen with the three-one-one program. You know, we have this map that he provided and you can see in each section, you know, you can see exactly what's been going on, you know, where the new septics are, who's gotten a water test, just for an example, just to know, you know. That way you can look at the data and see, okay, these particular areas have high nitrates or however you want to classify that. But I think something similar for the roads and bridges is going to be very helpful so that we can kind of, you know, track that and address some of the areas that are, whether it's just poorer gravel that's because of where it's being dug or, you know, some of the situations with, like we have with the flooding. It will show then geographically to us, which will be helpful. So, um, I'd still like to see us try to have an evening meeting. I mean, I think that there's obviously no sense in changing all the commission meetings at this time. But I do think that there should not be a discrepancy about doing the end of the month meeting. I mean, why would you be opposed to having just the end of the month meeting when we typically only do accounts payable and payroll? Why would you be opposed to that being at a different time than in the middle of the day and a working day?
If all we're doing is payables, I don't know why we'd have it at night.
So that there is an opportunity, an ample opportunity for people to attend if we do want to have, you know, more public comment sessions. It seems like, you know, we've had a steady flow all of two thousand seventeen of people coming in, expressing concerns or addressing different items. I know that it would, there would be more people.
We have always had people stopping.
Right.
In fact, we have less people stopping now than we ever did before. We would have two or three people every meeting stopping, thanking us for doing something or tell us about a culvert that was plugged or whatever, but they don't come anymore.
So the same people were coming repeatedly to thank you?
Do what?
You said they don't come anymore, like as if it was the same people coming over and over?
It is now. It used to be. Nobody would come in the courthouse to do business and they'd come into the meeting.
To have a chit chat?
Or thank us for doing something out near them or tell us about a problem out there somewhere. They don't come in anymore.
Okay, so what I'm suggesting though is that we purposefully have public comment sessions so that people don't have to take off of work or take time out of their, out of the middle of their day. Anybody that's coming to.
Do you have a telephone? I have a telephone.
Anybody that's coming to the courthouse in the middle of the day is either available that particular day, works for themselves and is able to do that or has a lunch hour and is local. You know, there are a lot of people that don't even work in the county since we're serving as kind of like a bedroom community to Salina. I mean, there are quite a few people that travel and they're gone every day from seven to four or eight to, you know, five or whatever that may be. So I'm not sure why we're being reluctant to accommodate that. It doesn't matter if we hold an evening meeting and no one shows up. It's the point that we're making ourselves available so that we're not in the middle of the day in a working day where, you know, the nine-to-five world is operating and isn't involved.
I have a telephone. Anyone can call me anytime. If I'm not there, I have an answering machine on it.
But that doesn't provide for the person who wants to address the issue to be, to have communication or be involved with any of the other people attending the meeting or to have it be in a public session, which is more important and in front of all three of us instead of one person. I mean, I've been told repeatedly all year how I have no authority as an individual, so for you to say that, well, they can call me, that doesn't mean anything. That means nothing.
I don't know. You know, I have people talk to me quite often about county stuff. Doesn't necessarily mean they expect me to, to accomplish it, but they want me to know about it and I can share it with whoever needs to be shared with. They've got a complaint or whatever.
Terry, in two thousand seventeen, I have, and to this day in two thousand eighteen, I have yet to hear you bring but maybe two or three issues before the commission. So if you have people talking to you all the time, wanting you to know certain things and it's up to you to bring it before the commission, then you, sir, have not done your job.
Well, they don't necessarily talk to me about something that they want addressed in the meeting.
So if you have no authority as an individual and these people are talking to you as an individual, wanting you to know certain things and you don't bring it to the meeting and this is the only place where we can actually make any decisions or have any impact, how does, how, how is that working?
I have people telling, telling me their opinion on a lot of things. That doesn't necessarily, they mean that they want me to bring their opinion into the meeting.
How can you effectively represent any particular opinion if it's just a personal conversation between you and, you know, Joe, Joe Blank? How does that work?
Are you done?
No, I would like an answer to my question.
Alexis, because people call me and comment to me about something, doesn't mean they want me to bring it up in a meeting.
Then what good can you do?
They can give me their opinion. I can tell you, back when the nursing home deal, I got I don't know how many calls of people telling me to support the nursing home.
We also had people influx.
You want me to come in there and say, well, Joe Blow and Jack Green and all these guys, name them out by name, called me and gave me their opinion on the nursing home? Is that what you want me to do?
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying you give them an opportunity to show up, to say to all three of us that just like people took time off of work to come to our meeting where we decided that we were, well, two out of three decided they were going to sign the contract with the new owner. with the new owner for a lease. So people do come when there are issues, and I think that it's, it's our due diligence to just provide that opportunity on a regular basis where people know, okay, the last working day of the month is the time when you can come in the evening if you're off of work or available.
And that's your opinion?
No, it's, it's quite, no, it's, it's been represented to me often, and I'm not here to say, you know, Jack, Joe, and Jill all said it, I'm just here to say that, yes, this is being said to me frequently, and there are people that would attend meetings, not, maybe not every meeting, but if they had an issue, it'd be much nicer for them to be able to come and schedule themselves in an evening instead of take time off of work in the middle of the day.
You have something, Mona?
Yes, I'd like to ask, if your constituents called you personally and said, I would like to attend an evening meeting, would you change your opinion?
I would consider it.
You would consider it?
Were you talking about two people calling me, or what are you talking about?
Does it matter? I mean, truthfully, if, if your constituents would like to attend an evening meeting, are you saying you would consider?
I have a thousand, I have a thousand constituents.
And?
Well, two of them call me and want something, and the other nine hundred ninety-eight don't.
Well, just because they're not calling you doesn't mean that they don't want it.
Okay.
Why, why wouldn't we as a commission just be open to having this year, two thousand and eighteen, the end of the month meetings in the evening? You know, you've said that you've tried other meeting times in the past, I don't really see that reflected in the minutes, but it may be true further back than I've looked. However, it doesn't mean that it, it, it won't work, it doesn't mean that.
Four or five months with an evening meeting and nobody showed up.
Well, it doesn't mean that, it doesn't mean that.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Okay, you always say the end of the month meeting, again, like I have said, if you were gonna need to do the end of the month meeting, then you would have to have it the night before. That date always fluctuates, wouldn't it be better to say the first Monday, the second Monday, the third Monday, or the fourth Monday, rather than the end of the month meeting? That, I'm just gonna say that.
The only reason why I've consistently chose that, chosen that, is because we don't have an agenda, so to speak. We mostly just do payroll, which is, you know, we get time to at least look at it ahead of time when we do our accounts payable, and again, we get time to look at it ahead of time, so.
I, I get that, but do you understand where I'm coming from, that we have vendors that know that we mail out on the last working day of the month? So are you going to tell me it's okay for me to go ahead and mail checks? And we meet on the last working day of the month, or, because you would have to change that date, it cannot be the la, it cannot be the end of the month. I mean, you would have to change the date of the end of the month meeting not to be the last working day of the month, is what I'm saying.
Well, the end of the month meeting can happen at any time, we did it the week of Christmas, like a day or two early or something, so that we could have our day off and et cetera.
Our time doesn't fluctuate, it's just like we would have liked to have had it for you guys to be able to improve on Monday of this past week, but we weren't able to get everything in and done. Because you have to require the coordination of everybody in order to do it. I'm just saying it might be easier, and it may be a little bit more plausible to have it be a certain particular Monday, not of every, of every month, and not just the last working day of the month. Regardless of what the agenda looks like, I'm just.
So you're saying, if you said every first Monday of the month, the eve, the commissioners have an evening meeting, that way it's always the first Monday, and it's always the same day, and everyone knows. And it's not a, a floating day like this week, or this month, it would be a Wednesday, and last month, you know, it was a, well, it happened to be Wednesday, but next month it might be a Thursday or whatever, I see what you're saying.
That, that would be my suggestion, and I would honestly, you would have to look to see when city councils meet, when school districts meet. Say the school districts meet the first Monday of the month, the cities meet the second Monday of the month, so you might wanna look at the third or the fourth Monday.
Mm-hmm, that is true, I think the cities meet, yeah, I think the cities meet on the.
If, if, if it's to be a little bit more plausible, I, I, I don't know, unless you said the last Wednesday of every month will be the end of the month meeting.
How does that work for payroll and accounts payable?
It probably wouldn't work if you said the last.
Well, not if the last, not if the last day is a Wednesday or a Tuesday.
Yes.
Because then you're spilling over into the next week from the week prior, so, yeah, that wouldn't work. Question on that.
Why I say that's, that's where my struggle is at, because we do that part of it.
When we were talking about paying bills for the nursing home, you said sometimes Hannah was making a double payment because we were getting a receipt, or an invoice, excuse me, from um, the place of purchase, and then we were also getting one from the nursing home, and they were turning in, um, their expenses. So my question is, if we're approving those payments before the checks are sent out, how are they getting a double pay? How are they getting a, how are they being paid twice?
Because nobody was catching it, a lot of times it occurs in a month, so like this month. We'll just use Lincoln Building Supply for example, as an example. If the nursing home sent the invoice to us the month following, the month that like.
So we weren't catching it either, as a commission, looking at that we paid that same bill the month prior?
It may have crossed months, because there is, there has been months where there has been a bill, I mean, occasionally it's a large amount, sometimes you guys will catch it. And you'll say, didn't we pay that last month, and then we'll look back and say, oh my gosh, yes. Now, our program has where it has the duplicate invoice number option, but when it does that, sometimes it flags for every invoice number that happens to have the same invoice.
And no matter who the, right, who the payee is.
Yes, so, so that is how that happens, so sometimes, um, she had, may have gotten the bill from Lincoln Building Supply, went ahead and entered it because they would send us the bills towards the end of the month, and then maybe the nursing home didn't send it to us until the next month. So we paid on one month and not on the other, and, you know, that's also intriguing in our office, because that's something that I've always told them, you have to look back and see and make sure, but sometimes if they get the same dollar amount, it doesn't always equate that it's the exact same invoice. So, but that's, that's on us, because we're supposed to catch those things.
Right. So another question that I was asked recently, I was, and I was looking through our report from, um, Lindberg, Vogel, Pearson, Ferris, the, the auditors, do we have an actual spreadsheet of all the end of the year ending balances? For every fund?
We don't have a spreadsheet, but we have a report.
But that's not in here?
Um, well, on theirs.
I mean, they give each, you have to flip through and find each individual fund, and then watch the, the transactions.
I think there is a place, if you let me.
Yes, if you can find that, I was looking through there.
I have looked at this for a while.
So do you create your own spreadsheet?
No, our program, so we have a, the only thing is, is sometimes that fluctuates, because during the month of January, February, and March, the revenue itself won't fluctuate, but maybe the cash balance will fluctuate, because in January, February, and March, we allow invoices to be paid.
Year to be fulfilled out of.
And I never paid attention to how that affects that cash balance, because.
Well, that, that's the whole purpose of the carryover, when we carry over in the fund itself, it's to protect payments maybe going out from unpaid bills from the prior year, but then anything that's left over can be used in the current year.
So here's all your funds.
Mm-hmm.
Here's your ending cash balance.
But does this have, um, okay, so this is out of the general fund?
Um, I think, no, I think it has all of them, because it has fire.
Okay, but I'm, but where is from the general fund, the line items? Do you see what I'm saying, like?
You wanna see like clerk's office, oh, there isn't.
I'm saying anything that operates out of the general fund has its own line item, right? So when it says.
There is no, because it's all considered general fund, so the general fund cash is general.
So do we have that spreadsheet anywhere, or?
No, it doesn't exist because cash, only budget, cash, cash isn't accumu, like, the clerk's office is in the county general's fund. I don't have cash, I only have budget, county general has the cash, so you will only see the county general fund in there. Because we don't have cash, general fund has cash, we're just a line item within that.
So when we transfer from the county general fund into the.
Capital improvement?
Where is that? Like, that's not on here either.
Um, well, it would be considered a transfer.
But this, this county general fund ending balance is this, is that, um, prior to the transfer or after?
After the transfer.
So we never.
So it's included as like, it's.
It's included in expenditures, but it doesn't, but this.
And it's included in receipt on this side.
Right, but I, but I'm being asked, you know, where is the, where's the accounting, the auditing firms spreadsheet that shows what those expenditures are, because this expenditure, if you're counting the end of the year cash reserve as an expenditure, because you're spending it at the end of the year into an overall, like a rollover fund.
It's in, it's in a six hundred to nine hundred page report that the auditor gets from us. So they get a detailed report of every expenditure, every check, every receipt that comes into the county.
See that?
No, but you can if you want, I mean, it's huge, but.
Okay.
But, yeah, you.
Do you print out one every year?
I don't print it out anymore, because we send it to them on a, it's on a PDF, so we could give you a PDF of it.
Okay, could, could you do that?
Yeah.
Do you want me to fill out a form?
Um, no.
Okay.
But I don't have this year's done yet, because they don't, they.
From two thousand.
From twenty seventeen, because they don't want us to do it until we get to the end of March, but that doesn't mean I can't run it and send it to you. But we do for them as of the end of March, once we get those last three months of the county bill. So we give each department three months to turn in their bills, so they can hit their last year's budget. And then after that, then it has to hit their current year, regardless of when they spend it.
Okay, so I understand what you're saying now, that's a little more clear to me as far as this general fund, because I did see that all of these different, you know, other external funds, I'll call them, are itemized as far as beginning and ending balance, but within that general fund itself, you're saying if you wanted to, if you wanted to basically chart across the expenses and watch the beginning and ending balance of any one particular line item, that you would have to request.
You look at the budget report, not the cash.
So that's what, that's what this broke down in here, when you get a little bit further, we'll just look at mine for example, because I don't really care if you. Look at mine, and I hope I was good, I may not have been. Do you mind?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so here's like the general fund, and this is broke down, and this is budget then, so like clerk, ninety-one. Prior year actual ninety-one thousand seven thirty-seven, or seven forty-three, actual ninety-seven zero eighty-nine, budget a hundred thousand. So that means I was under budget by three thousand one hundred and fifty-one dollars. And then when you come back here, then it breaks it down into the four line items that they budget, it still doesn't give you that much detail, but it tells you that, um, ninety, well, that I spent ninety-four thousand two hundred and forty dollars in salaries, two thousand five hundred, or actually, here's the actual, ninety-eight thousand five hundred and four dollars in salaries, this is what my budget was, so it was over budget in salaries, contractual services, commodities, reimbursements, and then that comes in.
Are your reimbursements mostly from doing the accounting for the billing?
Yes.
So, and then where are we in that process? Finding a.
I'm trying to find out how many, um, I've got contacts from other counties, and now I need to draft a letter. And one of the people contacted me, and they said it would be helpful if we could tell them approximately how many billable runs we have, and about what our revenue has been being, the thing that I have a hard time with that is because we haven't done so well on the billing side of it, because we've been behind in our office, I don't know how to, what to tell them, because I don't want them to bank. So what I thought I would do is go back to a five-year period of time, but I'm waiting on getting the number of billable runs.
Well, and that, I think, is an important thing where when this department head comes in from EMS, he can be telling us and updating us monthly. We've done so many runs this month, we've put on this many miles on our vehicle, you know, that way we have, we can chart and kind of follow the progress, instead of just at the end of the year, like you're saying, you, you guys have been behind on billing, so you're waiting to catch up with reimbursements, and that is, I would say, kind of messing with your budget, because you're, you're trying to account for doing that and then collecting the money, which you don't know is coming or not. But if we get these regular progress type reports, we would have a sense of where we are now, not necessarily have to look back for five years and average it out and kind of, and do it that way.
And the other side of that too, is like, I'm over budget on my, for example, payroll, because I'm supposed to transfer twelve hundred dollars from the election fund to the general fund to help offset the cost, I just don't, I haven't done that for the past couple of years, number one, because my election fund doesn't always have the money. Number two, it was just kind of their way of circumventing giving me election pay, which they're not even giving me election pay. Most counties get election pay, but that was their way of making it look like I was getting election pay, I'm not getting election paid. I'm not getting any additional income from the election, my fund was getting additional income, so it's kind of a worship, I just haven't been doing the transfer. But a hundred dollars of my wage supposedly is elections, it's not, but.
But no matter what you do during an election, you're not eligible for overtime?
I'm not eligible, my staff is, and, um, like, we have the recycling center employees deliver, um, the equipment, and so I pay for their time rather than the recycling center paying for their time.
Since you brought that up, because I've never used the recycling center here, you know, we have a trailer that is in town, so we can just drop off there. So what exactly are they maintaining at that facility, are we gonna talk about that property? Adjacent to it, what that means, or what, what's needed there?
We kind of do need to talk about that, because I, I wasn't aware until Ray was visiting with me a little bit about it, but half of the driveway on the south side actually belongs to that other property, one would imagine.
That he's offering for sale?
Yeah, one would imagine that the tree line is the property line, but it's actually half of, of the recycling center's driveway.
So he's just been letting us use that right, like as a right of way or something?
So wherever Strud and Ray normally park at, they're actually parking on that property and have been, that, um, there's a concrete slab that the suburban is sitting up on that doesn't run anymore, um, it's, it's actually their property, and Ray did say their garage, the garage on it is halfway decent, but.
So when they're, what are the hours that they are there?
They are normally there, um, in the mornings to clean up, and then the doors always, the sliding doors always open for people to drop off, and people will drop off all day long, and then in the morning they come, and, and normally they're there, I would say for two to three hours, they're only allowed twelve hours per week unless they're bailing, so if they're bailing, then they're there a little bit longer. If they know somebody's coming, like sometimes US Towers will let them know that they're gonna come, and then they'll, then they'll be there so they can open up the baler, and they can just drop, because US Towers will collapse everything, so they'll drop the stuff right into the baler. But otherwise, the baler is really, is locked at all times if they're not there, so then.
So they operate the baler, so once people bring in the cardboard, then they can operate the baler when they're there to get, to keep it? And then we have someone come and pick up everything?
Yeah, CB Trucking comes.
Do they, do we load to them, or do they load it themselves?
They load it themselves.
So really, it's just operating the baler and cleaning up anything that wasn't properly.
We have that van, trailer.
Pick up the Sylvan trailer, I still have one in Barnard.
Oh, they do go and get it, is that how, okay, I wondered how that got there from town?
Wants every other.
And then they unload that and sort it when they bring it?
Yeah, and then, and then they trade it out, now Barnard, they'll go get, because they have a smaller trailer, they will go get that trailer and clean it out in one day or two days, and then take it right back, because the burner people will, will recycle that much, and normally Randy lets them know the burner trailer needs to be picked up, so.
Okay.
And then we have a van lane trailer, so like when they, when they bail cardboard, they put the cardboard out, but if you bail like shredded paper, they don't like it to be out in the rain.
How long have we had the, those trailers in those satellite sites of the cities? Is there one in Beverly?
I, no.
I don't think so, not since CB Trucking opened up over.
Oh, because they're there, okay, they're there, so you can go there.
I, I, since before me, um, the recycling center used to be ran by Randy Pickering and Gina Eckhart and.
So they've always been making that trip to get that trailer? Because I have to say, when I moved here, I did not know it was even there, there's nothing really to.
It was behind the grocery store for a long time.
In Sylvan?
By Tru and Jim.
Yeah, that's right, and then we moved.
Grocery store there, just across the alley from Tru and Brothers.
Because if I'm picking up on what you're saying, Barnard has so much recycling that they empty twice as much from there as they do from Sylvan.
No, 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 I said Randy lets them know when they need to pick up over there, but they take their trailer back right away, because it's a smaller trailer.
Oh.
Sylvan, they take an empty trailer over and bring the loaded trailer back.
Switch them out.
Okay, yeah, no, Sylvan has a lot more now, I think CB Trucking has a trailer up by the, or up at the school, so the school does that, and CB Trucking picks that up.
Out of curiosity, do we have any money in that recycling?
Budget?
Mm-hmm.
They are inside the county general fund, and I think that it's like a twenty thousand or twenty, twenty-two or twenty-five thousand, I don't think they spend.
It looks to me like there's, there's, there was fourteen. There's, there was fourteen hundred dollars left over?
Yeah.
Can we talk about maybe getting a sign on Main Street that says, you know, like?
Recyclable trailer?
Yeah, I mean, it's not as if, it's not as if people who typically recycle, like myself, I mean, I know it's there. But for a long time, I didn't know it was there. I was hauling my own stuff clear to Salina. I mean, because I'm pretty avid about my own recycling. But just for even a reminder, I feel like it's kind of a, people don't get in the habit of it, and, and once they do, they are, or they never do, I guess. But I feel like that's something that's important. It's just, that's a personal point of mine, but I, I can't see that a sign wouldn't be able to come out of that.
No, but you would probably have to go to their city council and get permission for.
Yeah, and that's a state highway, too, so there might be some restrictions there also.
It may be easier to see if they would send out a notice in their city bills reminding them that there is recycling center and what they accept for a recycling trailer.
Is it no glass, correct?
No glass, yeah. And that's been a long time now. I think Beverly is taking glass. But when we were delivering to images, and I don't know if you saw that, but images in Salina, I think, closed. But when we were taking to images, they wanted to install a grinder and, yeah, it just, yeah.
They never did it?
Not with an open building, we just didn't want to risk.
Ray, uh, Durk.
Yeah, let me, uh, look in my book here. See what other notes I had. There was one other thing I wanted to ask. Oh, yes, I do.
Are you aware of, uh, Bob Howell, they're cutting trees?
What'd you say?
Are the, the road, uh, Bob Howell, is he, are you aware they're cutting trees?
Yeah.
On the road right of way?
As far as I know, yeah.
Well, they don't go out on private property to cut any. Well.
Well, okay, you know, kind of, if there's a certain issue there, they might get with the landowner and say, you know, we need to get this.
Issue came up between my son Milton and, and Bob was saying that they weren't cutting some trees, and he said, well, I can go cut them. And he said, no, you can't, you can't go do that because of liability. Then who's, who's responsible? Is the county liable if they don't get cut and somebody runs into them? What's the liability there?
Yeah.
He's speaking about on sage by a couple of bridges. There's some, there's some big trees. He let them grow up for years and years and years, where you can't hardly get across the bridge. And so, if, if, if a landowner or somebody wants to help cut them, that's a liability, but it's a liability they don't. So, what, what's the easy thing going to be to do?
But I don't know.
That's, that's a tough deal on that.
I think that goes back to, you know, from what I was told, each individual motor grader operator is responsible for reporting, at least if they can't do it themselves, taking care of whatever issues exist on their route, and they walk about a hundred miles. So, that goes back to creating this mapping program, where you say, X marks the spot, this particular road has overgrown trees and branches. And then, at least whoever the head of the culvert or bridge crew is at that time, if they're not working on that and they know they're out cutting, okay, check mark, we did that section. They go to the next one, okay, check mark, we did that section. Because I know there were a few people who were coming to meetings, who had said, in about five or six years, they hadn't seen any tree trimming on their, on their roads, and then we got around to it last year. So, it's either unawareness of knowing where these problem areas are, and also time constraint, because they might be getting to it next, but then they're, you know, they're working on a job, so they, they put it off. And then how do you know that that's where you're going to pick up again, unless you have it marked on the map and it's in order? Check, check, check. This is one, two, three. And like you're saying, if this is years gone by, and they're this bigger, you know, this big around, this big around, then obviously, it's not been on the, do it now.
You can tell where they've cut some off, but it, it's sort of like some are beyond their capability, and so they just leave them grow some more. It's hard. They usually take care of the major projects through the winter, when they got the old crew available. Is that where they, is that where, uh, Bob and, uh, Michael were today?
I, I imagine.
They didn't have a schedule on the agenda.
If they don't have something that they really need to come in about, they're better off going out and taking care of what they're doing, so. Some, you know, certain times of the year, it's, there's not much going on. They'll come in and say, well, we're cutting trees. Same thing I told us last week, you know, so.
The other signs are still up on the same amount of roads as what they were last week, so I guess they're still there. Maybe.
On that note, that's two, two things that I had in my notes. I move to hold a two thousand eighteen road and bridge meeting. Department, department meeting, I guess I should call it.
You want to schedule something, or are you just saying you want to have a meeting in two thousand eighteen?
I think last year we did it at, what, in February, I believe, February, March, I think, if I'm right. Might have been March. I think it would just kind of be a good annual.
Why don't you wait, bring it up next week, we have a full commission to talk about it. Do you want to do that, or you want your motion to die?
Tabled, or is that the?
It dies for lack of second.
Okay.
I mean, that's just procedurally, I, I will bring it up again, thank you. And I move to draft a thank you letter to Lincoln Park Manor employees for donating labor time.
For what?
For, for the project that they're working on.
Employees didn't donate the time, they're getting paid, they're getting paid by Lincoln Park Manor.
Strike, strike and correction, please. I misunderstood then. Thank you to Lincoln Park Manor Administration for donating labor.
For the painting project?
Yes.
I'll second that motion. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You done?
I would like to, uh, you know, I'm going to make this motion again, and, and Dawn, you've addressed me on the issue, and Terry, you've clearly let it die for lack of second more than a dozen times. But I still think that the commission needs to do due diligence, because I've heard the excuse from both you and our other colleague, that when we decided to enter into this contract with our county attorney, which operates out of the general fund budget, that I was questioning earlier, how that breaks down, when you look at rollover expenses and everything else. You know, I've, I've heard the excuses that, A, you know, it, it's not a contract. It's, it's just a reimbursement type situation. And, and if that's the case, we have yet to see receipts. I've also heard the excuse that, oh, yes, it's a contract, but it was, it was formulated by the commission, and therefore it has nothing to do with the recipient. But that's not true, because it takes two parties to enter into an agreement. So, there really is no way around addressing this issue, and I feel like it's the same thing as what we just mentioned earlier, speaking with AR, talking about, or HR, excuse me, talking about whether or not we have a full-time employee in, under the register of deeds, which is state mandated, apparently, and I did not know that. Or whether we continue to have a full-time employee under the appraiser, whether or not that's mandated, I don't know. But these are the things that need to be addressed, because it comes in layers. You know, if, if the state is mandating certain things that are basically taxing us out of efficiency and, um, availability of funds, then we need to be addressing these types of things. And if we don't take it upon ourselves to be responsible for those decisions, understand them fully, then we're not really performing the necessities of our job. And that has been a complaint that I've heard repeatedly, you know, it's apathy and basically irresponsibility. Are you aware that yourself and myself and, and Aljo are the highest paid employees in the county?
Or what?
We are the highest paid employees of the county.
Okay.
You've continually not given yourself a raise, and I've told you, I, I think that's very commendable. You know, your, your salaries over the years, decades that you've been in have, have barely budged. You're graciously giving out money across the board regardless of employee output. But at the same time, when you look at the hours in, as far as time spent in the public eye, doing our job, looking at the data in front of us, analyzing it, communicating with the people that we're responsible to in a public manner, because as I said before, you can have as many phone calls as you want, but I've been repeatedly reminded that as an individual, I possess no authority to do anything. So, you possess no authority to do anything, except for have a conversation as a, as a buddy or a friend, or just a concerned ear. And so, when we are in session, we're making quite a bit of money to be here only two to three hours a week.
You don't spend hours during the week during research? You don't, you don't go out and look at projects?
That is not billable. That's not something billable. I've received, I've received some mileage compensation for quite a few trips that I've made around for certain things, and that's different.
You know, I've, I've been in here for, what, fourteen years, and I've never turned in a cent of mileage, but.
Your district is not near the scope of mine.
No, it's not.
So, I'm sorry.
But I spend time in your district. I spend time in Mr. Wallace's district. I don't just spend time in my own district.
Well, you have quite a bit of time to give then, and that's interesting. I'm.
Yeah, you can ask my employer how much time I put into this job.
Well, regardless, it's still.
Sitting here for two hours, listening to you. Quite honestly, two hours.
And you've even learned something, as you proved this week, by saying that you now know what a.
I knew what a fracture critical, you know, I tried to explain to you last week that fracture criticals are inspected every year. I know, you don't believe that. That's fine. You've got some idea that they pull two or three out of the hat each year and inspect them. They're done every year. I tried to help you and tell you, explain that to you. You don't want to listen. I don't know anything.
Maybe next week I can show you the video where you explain to me that a fracture critical bridge is assessed by the rate at which it's deteriorated, and once they consider it to be fracture critical, then they put it on a list. I can, I can pull that up for you next week.
Well, that's fine. That is. It deteriorates to a certain point.
A fracture critical bridge is a fracture critical bridge because of the construction of the bridge. It has nothing to do with the deterioration. It is or it isn't? Yeah, it actually, that's actually true. I read.
A fracture, a concrete bridge can be fracture critical just as much as a wood.
Any bridge can be fracture critical, and they don't become fracture critical. They are or they are not, depending on the type of construction. So, when I read.
As they deteriorate, they become fracture critical.
No, a fracture critical bridge is a fracture critical bridge, depending upon how it is constructed.
Okay, Alexis. Um, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. You've had plenty ample time for your fifteen minutes that you were allotted on the agenda.
Thank you.